Because of what and for why hatred, it could never ever happen again in anyone's lifetime. And we should all learn to love one another. I also want to remember the hundred thousand lives, the people who lost their lives because of Covid. And I just want to say that we're thinking of all the families who've lost a loved one. So we'll have evening prayers, opening prayers, and I'd like to welcome everyone. It's lovely to see you all and I hope you're all well and your families are kept safe during this quiet, depressing period of Covid. And I'd like to welcome Reverend Sally Bayless to say our prayers and we'll have a minute's silence in remembrance of the Holocaust Memorial Day. Thank you. Reverend Sally Bayless there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Thank you, Sally.
You can hear me? Because I can't, I can't see anyone, but that doesn't matter. If you can hear me. Now, you've lit a candle.
We can see you, darling.
Oh, good. Well, I'm going to light a candle here and turn the lights off for the minute and then I'll say a prayer afterwards.
Okay.
So I've lit a candle. And I'll just turn the light off. So I hope you can, you'll be able to, if I put that in front, can you see the candle?
No.
Look, just get on with it.
I'll just get on with it.
Yeah.
Right, we'll have a minute's silence then.
Okay, thank you.
So as we remember those victims of the Holocaust, we are mindful that such evil happens not just because of exceptionally bad people, but because good people prefer not to know and turn their backs. So we pray that that be a lesson to us today. To not ignore those who are struggling. To not walk on the other side. We give thanks for those such as our councillors who offer themselves for public service. And we pray that they may continue to be an example to us all. We pray for them this evening. We pray for them as they manage the affairs of the borough in very difficult times, knowing that so many people are suffering anxiety, loneliness, as well as the direct effects of illness. And so we commend this meeting to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much, Sally. Much appreciated. And I'm hoping you stay for a bit of the meeting anyway.
I'll stay for a bit. I can't see a thing, but I can hear you.
Oh, right. Okay, my darling. Take care. You keep saying. Apologies for absence. Item two, councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only apology I was going to give was for a potential lateness, but the councillor concerned has arrived, so no further apologies.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sam Smith, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Potential lateness from councillor Greensmith due to work that she will be joining shortly.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Caroline, would you mind confirming who is present for the benefit of people listening at home, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And just prior to reading out the names, if I could just, before we officially start the meeting and read out the names, if I could just remind you that the audio of this meeting is being live broadcast on the council website and the video of the meeting will be published after the meeting. Thank you. And so just to confirm those that are present, we have councillor Adams.
Yep.
Councillor Peter Barnes. Madam Mayor. Councillor Barnfather. Councillor Bosworth. Councillor Boyle. Councillor Brooks. Councillor Clark. Councillor Clooney. Councillor Collis. And councillor Creamer. Councillor Elliott. Councillor David Ellis. Councillor Rachel Ellis. Councillor Roxanne Ellis. Councillor Elwood. Could I have confirmation whether councillor Feeney is present? I can't see a name on the list. I don't know whether he's dropped out, but the name hasn't appeared on my list. Does anybody know if councillor Feeney is present?
I'm just going to try and contact Caroline.
Okay, so we can, we can come back to that one. At the moment, he's absent on the meeting. So councillor Fox is present. Councillor Gibbons. Councillor Greensmith. We have councillor Gregory. Councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Hope. Councillor Keneely. Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Ron McCrossan. Councillor Viv McCrossan. Councillor Miller. Councillor Murray. Councillor Nayuk. Councillor Paley. Councillor Parr. Councillor Payne. Councillor Scroggy. Councillor Martin Smith. Councillor Sam Smith. Councillor Hemingway. Councillor Towsey Hinton. Councillor Truscott. Councillor Wheeler and councillor Wilkinson. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could I also just confirm for the purpose of the recording the officers that are present to support the meeting? We have Mike Hill, who is the chief executive. We have Francesca Wiley, the monitoring officer. And we have Tina Adams, deputy chief financial officer. And democratic services officers supporting the meeting today are Alec Dubley and myself, Caroline McClery, who's clerk of the meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Okay, item three is the mayor's announcements. Well, as you can gather, I haven't done very much. I did have a maply rotary online and told them all about what the council's doing and what we've been doing and what we've spent and everything. And they gave me £250 for the mayor's charity, so I wanted to say thank you very much to them. I also just want to say that I'm sure all of you wish to say thank you to the hospitals around us and the wonderful staff for all the hard work and the dedication that they've done. And they're still doing it for people in Gedlin and Nottinghamshire. It's been a really horrific time and I'm sure a depressing time, having to cope and see people dying and keep going and staying positive, doing the very best that they can and being very proud to work for the NHS. So I want to thank them from all of you as councillors, I'm sure, and our leader and deputy leader and the other leader, councillor Adams. I'm sure you all want to say thank you very much to the NHS. And I also want to say this, I've got a poem which I was going to go twice to the Fiends Medical to give them this poem for my last charity for asthma. And I haven't been to see them, but I am hoping to get an appointment to go and see them and take the poem so that they can leave it in the ward. Anyway, that's mayor's announcements because there's not been very much, as you can gather. Finally, I'd be very grateful if members could use the raise your hand button or put a message on the meeting chat if you would like to speak on any agenda item. If members aren't able to do this, it will still be given an opportunity to be. As councillors and the public cannot see us, we need to be clear on the decisions that are made. So therefore we're asking Caroline, we invite each of you to confirm how you were voting. This won't be a formal recorded voting unless it's specifically requested, okay?
Councillor Parr, Madam Mayor. Councillor Parr.
Councillor Parr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just a kindly reminder that having had my vaccine injection, the first one, I want it recorded to the wider public how the volunteers, and there were quite a few of the Gedling Borough staff, performed at that, at Richard Harris Centre.
Brilliant, isn't it?
It went as smooth as silk.
Oh, lovely. Thank you very much for that. Brilliant.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Anyone else? No? No? Okay. Item four, to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of November 2020. Councillor Clark, would you like to move, please?
Move it, Madam Mayor.
Okay, councillor Feeney, would you like to second it?
Yes, second it, Madam Mayor. And I'd just like to put on record on behalf of myself and the leader in our group, remembering in paying respects to all those that have lost their lives in relation to Covid, but also other reasons since we last met. And also just to echo councillor Parr's comments, to put on record our thanks not only to the NHS staff and Clinical Commissioning Group staff, but also the Gedling Borough staff and amazing volunteers at both the flagship vaccination centre in our borough at the Richard Harris Centre, which obviously has also been our outstanding humanitarian centre throughout the last year and a half, but also to all those community centres, the GPs, you know, the community centres out in the community, the pharmacies who are assisting with the vaccination rollout. It really is a national effort of everybody and it is to be commended. And it is certainly helping give a glimmer of hope in what otherwise has been a very dark time, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, councillor Feeney. Yeah, very well said. Thank you. Last minute, so not normally voted down. I don't wish to take a vote. If any member is not content with this or would like to raise a point of accuracy on the minutes, could they please indicate now? Otherwise I'll assume that the council is happy to approve the minutes. Okay?
Fine.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest?
No, no.
No, no. Thank you very much. Item six, to deal with any petitions received under standing order 8A.
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item seven, to answer questions asked by the public under standing order eight.
None received, Madam Mayor.
Item eight, to answer questions asked by the member of the council under standing order nine. A question been received from councillor Sam Smith. So councillor Sam Smith, would you like to ask your question, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to ask the portfolio holder for public protection, we've all seen an increase in antisocial behaviour in our wards over the past year. Can the cabinet member responsible inform us how this data is collected by the council and what plans the council has in place to reduce antisocial behaviour across the borough?
Thank you very much, councillor Smith. Councillor Ellis, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I suppose I ought to start with an apology to those members who are on overview and scrutiny. I alerted members on the committee to this increase in reports of ASB when I attended it in November. As well as that discussion, the committee considered an update earlier this month. These two meetings gave the opportunity for a thorough discussion of ASB and the effect of Covid-19. Therefore, much of this reply would be familiar to members on overview and scrutiny. Councillor Smith was at both those meetings, so I'm not sure what additional insights he expects to gain from asking this question that he couldn't gain from taking advantage of the earlier opportunities. Recorded incidents of antisocial behaviour reported by the council taken from two data sets. The primary data is incidents reported to Nottinghamshire Police. The second is incidents reported to the council and recorded in its own system uniform. As I discussed with them at the scrutiny committee, the increase in reported ASB since March 2020 is mainly driven by reports of infringements of Covid restrictions. In line with the police national recording standards, these are recorded as ASB. Consequently, there's been an apparent increase locally, across the South Nuts Committee Safety Partnership area, across Nottinghamshire and indeed nationally. Much of this was exacerbated during the first period of lockdown, which coincided with good weather, which proved too much temptation for many. The latest information from the Police and Crime Commissioner and the Chief Constable confirms that the increase in ASB is primarily due to enforcement of Covid restrictions and that the underlying level of traditional ASB has not increased. It's anticipated the significant increase in reported ASB seen at the six-month point will have diminished when the full year figures are published. The response to antisocial behaviour is a partnership effort. The council works closely with the neighbourhood policing team as well as other partners, such as social housing providers, to provide an effective and comprehensive response. The Antisocial Behaviour, Crime and Policing Act 2014 consolidated powers available to deal with ASB. These powers include civil injunctions, criminal behaviour orders and community protection notices, all of which are taken against individuals. Action can be taken where the problems relate to specific places through public space protection orders, dispersal orders and closure orders. As you'd expect, Madam Mayor, the council and its partners use their powers appropriately and judiciously. Under this administration, the council has consistently demonstrated its determination to take action where necessary. Responding to Covid has been a challenge to all public services. We can be proud of the way that the council and its staff have adapted to meet the humanitarian needs of our communities. In addition, I would commend the way in which the public protection team has provided support and advice to businesses and individuals. Very much engaging, educating and encouraging. However, where appropriate, we have taken enforcement action. The coordination between the neighbourhood policing team and the public protection service is well established. As well as the fortnightly local operations meetings, the fact that two teams are co-located means that in normal times, the informal discussions are far easier and relationships are strong. The neighbourhood inspector also attends my portfolio meetings. These local arrangements demonstrate joint working on a common agenda. When specific issues have come to light, appropriate action has been taken. For example, members highlighted concerns about some parks and open spaces being used for impromptu gatherings of young people. In response, high visibility patrols were deployed, providing advice and where necessary, enforcement. And thank you to those local members who raised these specific concerns with me on the team. The neighbourhood wardens and the police have continued with their targeted patrols, including joint patrols where necessary, to engage with the public across the borough. The Covid marshals are an additional resource to provide support, reassurance, deterrence and are a good source of intelligence information. There have been ongoing engagement projects and outreach work delivered in hotspot locations with young people by the county council youth services, again, working closely with police and wardens. Our CCTV system is a vital tool in tackling antisocial behaviour in identified hotspots. There's been some very significant intelligence and information obtained by the CCTV room staff. Members will be aware that this administration has continued to invest in CCTV and to improve the quality of images for evidential purposes. Members will be aware of some high-profile instances of closure orders being served, of fixed penalties being imposed and of dispersal orders being made. However, we must not lose sight of the fact that most people in the borough have accepted the restrictions which the government has imposed and despite the difficulties have contributed to controlling Covid. Enforcement has only been necessary against a minority. Madam Mayor, I hope that this response reassures members that the council and its partners take antisocial behaviour seriously and are responding appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Elling. Very, very well done. Councillor Smith, would you like to ask any follow-up question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank the portfolio holder for that answer. Inspector Pearson and his Gedenby teams are doing a fantastic job at keeping our communities safe and are very active across the borough. During a recent meeting of Burton Joyce Parish Council, I was incredibly pleased to be told by the inspector that they are the most well-staffed that they have ever been since he's been in the role. Covid and lockdowns have distorted recent ASB figures because all Covid breaches are logged as antisocial behaviour. But in pre-Covid times, in our wards of Plains, Dumbles, Kelverton, Newstead and Trent Valley, we have seen an increase in antisocial behaviour such as damages to our parks and littering. I agree with councillor Ellis that CCTV cameras and an increased presence of council wardens supports the fantastic work that Gedling's neighbourhood policing teams are doing and does lead to reduction of antisocial behaviour. Will the portfolio holder for public protection work with us on plans to introduce these measures in our wards?
Okay, councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to councillor Smith for the positive response to the work that the council is doing. The council keeps ASB under review and happy to discuss with members particular issues in particular wards. Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. Okay, we're going to item nine, council tax reduction scheme. Report of the Director of Corporate Resources. The recommendation's on page 15 of the agenda. So councillor Payne, would you like to move, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is on page 15 of the agenda, as you highlighted. The recommendation is that the council tax reduction scheme, shorthand CTRS for 2021/22, to apply from the 1st of April 2021, be approved and adopted by full council and that there are no changes to the council tax reduction scheme for working age people as described in section two of this report, except for the annual upratings and amendments of allowances and premiums in line with housing benefit levies, Madam Mayor. The report seeks approval, Madam Mayor, from council to continue the current council tax reduction scheme, CTRS, without revision except for the annual upratings for the next financial year 2021/22. Council tax legislation, Madam Mayor, requires that the full council must decide each year whether its council tax reduction scheme is to remain the same or to be revised for the following financial year. The decision in this instance must be made by the 11th of March 2021, but can be made before then, hence it being before us this evening, Madam Mayor. By way of background to the scheme, localising council tax support was introduced as part of the welfare system reforms in 2012 by central government and replaced the council tax benefit scheme that many residents will have been familiar with prior to that date. The government set the scheme for all pensioners and continues to do so. However, local councils were left to implement their own scheme for claimants of working age. The council agreed its first council tax reduction scheme in December 2012 for the 2013/14 financial year and members who were on the council at that time will remember that decision. With only a few changes, Madam Mayor, to the previous council tax benefit scheme. This was to ensure, and it was a decision by this Labour administration, that claimants were largely protected and continued to receive the same level of support from Gedling Borough Council as they had done previously from central government when central government decided to withdraw from supporting those families. The scheme, Madam Mayor, has not changed since 2013 here locally, apart from being uprated each year in line with most welfare schemes. The aim of the scheme, Madam Mayor, is to protect the most financially vulnerable households in our borough. And with the current situation of Covid-19, Madam Mayor, that we've already elucidated about at the start of this meeting, this Labour administration is very clear that it's even more important to maintain this scheme at the maximum level than ever before, as we know families are continuing to see the stresses and strains of the economic impact of this awful virus. The report does set out a number of options, Madam Mayor, that have been considered for changes to the scheme in the context of making financial savings for the council. Clearly, the option which generates the biggest single saving for the council is where everyone currently receiving full council tax reduction would pay 20%. That's a fifth of their council tax liability. This, Madam Mayor, would generate a saving for Gedling in the region of £85,000. But, Madam Mayor, a crucially important fact would impact on 4,800 low-income families across our borough in all of our wards. This means, Madam Mayor, that a household in an average band aid property in a non-parished area who currently has a zero council tax charge as a result of our scheme would immediately have to start paying £268 per year that they don't currently have to pay. These types of households and families would also have been the hardest hit by other welfare reforms introduced by this government and are the ones most likely to not be able to afford to pay. To add even more financial strain on families, non-payment could also mean extra recovery costs being incurred, such as magistrate court costs and enforcement agency compliance and enforcement fees. Other councils, Madam Mayor, that have made similar changes to their scheme have reported increased non-payment and more recovery action resulting in the need for more staffing resource. This could easily mean that any savings made by Gedling Borough Council from a change to the scheme could be cancelled out. It is therefore recommended on behalf of this administration, Madam Mayor, to protect those 4,800 families across our borough and to recommend to the council, as we are doing this evening, that the current council tax reduction scheme continues unchanged for 2021 and 22, which is in line with the assumptions made in the council's medium-term financial plan. Since 2013/14, the government withdrew funding for the working age element of this scheme, leaving only a partial amount of funding coming through the Revenue Support Grant, Madam Mayor. And we'll have discussions later about the settlement on today's agenda, Madam Mayor. But since 2019 and 20, the Revenue Support Grant has disappeared completely for many councils, including Gedling Borough Council. So clearly this scheme is funded entirely by the local authority. The right decision, in my view, Madam Mayor, the right thing to stand by those 4,800 families that otherwise would face a £268 bill and the right thing to continue to support families while they're facing the devastating impacts, both economic and health-wise in terms of this pandemic. So I will move the recommendation as on page 18 in the report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Payne, for moving. Councillor Wheeler, would you like to second, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seconded, duly seconded and reserved the right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone would like to speak on this?
Officer Adams.
Councillor Adams, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening. Yes, I'm very happy to see the conclusion of the council tax reduction scheme review and the officers for their work in putting it together. It's a very in-depth report. We have all seen the effect, as councillor Payne alluded to, on the working families during the pandemic. It's clear to me that now is the time to support more, not less. I would also like to take this moment while we're talking about the actual pandemic to thank the incredible work being carried out by the NHS, as mentioned earlier, our vaccine volunteers and services supporting. The incredible effort from our residents, pausing their lives to enable the suppression of this virus cannot be underestimated either. It's been an incredible national effort on behalf of my group. I would like to commend all of you all in helping us get well, back to school and back to work as soon as is possible. We have a great council and it's great they took on the man show of managing this council tax reduction scheme so well. As a council, we know this is public money received from taxation and we have to therefore ensure it's utilised to the best way for residents within our borough. This is why an annual review is both appropriate and necessary. Looking at the financial part of the report, I am happy to see the officers exploring the most financially rewarding options for the council if change was to be made. I thank them for that. Also, looking at the same figures wholeheartedly, except even though the reduction for individuals in the scheme would see this council recover some £920,000 at a reduced rate of 80%, a 9.4% take on that would not cover the operating costs. The report's finding in regards to the money's clawback for the council is therefore negligible. I'm glad to see the sum of £873,000 from central government for 2021 for the tax, council tax hardship fund is very welcomed, which has supported over 2,200 households and reducing the working age families' council tax by some £450. It is also incredibly welcome support received from the UK Gov, who have created the local tax support grant for 2021/22 to cover additional cases needed by the CTRS as a result of the current challenging climate we find ourselves in due to the pandemic. All the financials aside, we should always support the most vulnerable in our society, whether it be those who have disabilities in receipt of PIP or on low-income households, as our own rules specifically determine. And that's the kind of society I want my children to grow up in anyway. So, Madam Mayor, if there was any confusion over my representation, for the avoidance of any doubt, my group will be supporting the council tax reduction scheme. Thank you.
Thank you so much, councillor Adams. Councillor Elwood, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Liberal Democrat group is happy to support the retention of the council tax reduction scheme. Liberal Democrats have long argued that council tax is an inequitable tax and needs to be replaced by a fairer system of local taxation. The council tax reduction scheme does at least make the tax slightly less inequitable and helps those least able to pay, so we will be supporting it tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Elwood. Councillor Boyle, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, we have to decide what we do with this scheme and I'm very happy to speak in favour of retaining it. When Sally spoke and gave her prayer, she wanted us to remember she wanted us to remember those who have fallen into illness due to this terrible pandemic. That has also meant that the people left behind may well have lost a wage earner. And also because of the shutdown of the economy, necessary because of the measures against the Covid nineteen, lots of people are being pushed towards a vulnerable status. It is right, therefore, that these people are protected from any financial penalty that might come from any change to the scheme. So I'm very glad that we are retaining it. And I welcome the fact that other party leaders, as we've heard from tonight, we've heard from councillor Adams and councillor Elwood, are also in support. This wasn't the case last year, but it is the case this year and I'm very glad to welcome it. What I would also ask people to do is to put a little bit of pressure on the Department for Communities and Local Government to say, well, look, you know, we are in a pandemic. More people are in a vulnerable status. We do have to look at council tax. Councils are doing their best to help their residents and we are one of only a few councils that have retained the scheme in full. It would be good if words mean anything about protecting the most vulnerable, that there is some recompense from central government to support the efforts that Gedling Borough are doing in this regard. And I know that later in the agenda, we'll be returning to local government finance again. But, you know, I would ask them, you know, on a cross-party basis to do that. So I welcome the fact that we're retaining this scheme and I'll be voting for this proposal this evening.
Thank you very much, councillor Boyle. Anyone else wishing to speak on it? I can't see any more hands up. No? Everybody satisfied? Councillor Payne, would you like?
Sorry, councillor Bosworth.
Oh, councillor Bosworth, sorry.
Thank you. I'd just like to say that the independent group will support this also.
Thank you, darling. Thank you. Councillor Payne, would you like to close?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the members for their contributions on this report. The late, great Nelson Mandela, Madam Mayor, once said that overcoming poverty is not a gesture of charity, it's just an act of justice. And I think he was absolutely right to say that. And let me just say, Madam Mayor, in closing, it shouldn't take a pandemic or a virus to ensure that we support the most vulnerable in society. And it certainly hasn't taken a pandemic or a virus for this administration to make sure that it's supporting the vulnerable. It's been doing it since two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, when the support for this scheme was withdrawn unfortunately from the government. And it's been the right thing to do over recent years and it continues to be the right thing to do. I reflect, Madam Mayor, as we've listened to the debate tonight, on two people who I think are quite inspirational leaders in their own right. Professor Sir Michael Marmot, who's been leading for decades on health inequalities in the country and Sir Simon Stephens, who I think is chief executive of the NHS, with his NHS colleagues, have been doing remarkable jobs in the last year and a half. Both of them, in their own right this week, talking about the ill-preparedness of this country entering this pandemic because of its creaking public services and its lack of resilience in its public services. And I think the, to coin a phrase, throwing of a protective ring and throwing of a protective safety net around those four thousand eight hundred families that this administration and this council has been doing over the last seven to eight years has been the right thing. And as Professor Sir Michael Marmot and Sir Simon Stephens said, has built in a degree of resilience. I welcome the belated support of the main opposition group. Thank you, councillor Adams, for the unequivocal support that you've offered tonight. And thank you to councillor Elwood and councillor Bosworth. It's great to have cross-party support for this scheme, which has always been the right thing to do and continues to be the right thing to do. And just to pick up one particular point councillor Adams has made, of course, any support from the government is always welcomed and not something that I or anybody in my group would be churlish about. And the additional council tax hardship funding that we receive from the government has been put to good use. And I just say this, it's been able in Gedling to be put to good use because we already had a very wide and robust council tax reduction scheme. So we've actually been able to go much further than anywhere else in the country in clearing council tax liability, in supporting families right across all the nineteen wards in Gedling Borough in a way that otherwise we wouldn't have been able to do and that certainly other councils haven't been able to do. So thank you for a constructive debate, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the cross-party support. Hopefully now we will have a unanimous vote and four thousand eight hundred families in the borough, supported by this scheme, will be able to rest a little bit easier in the face of the economic impact of the ongoing situation with the virus.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Payne. Right, can we now take a vote on this then, please, Caroline?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, when your name is called, please state whether you're for, against or whether you abstain. And just a reminder to take yourselves off mute at the time that you speak. Thank you. Councillor Adams.
For, thank you.
Councillor Peter Barnes.
Four.
Madam Mayor.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor Bosworth.
Four.
Councillor Boyle.
Four.
Councillor Brooks.
Four.
Councillor Clark.
Four.
Councillor Clooney.
Four.
Councillor Collis.
Four.
Councillor Creamer.
Four.
Councillor Elliott.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Roxanne Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Feeny.
Four.
Councillor Fox.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Four.
Councillor Greensmith.
Four.
Councillor Gregory.
Four.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Keneely.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Ron McRusden.
Four.
Councillor Viv McRusden.
Four.
Councillor Miller.
Four.
Councillor Murray.
Four.
Councillor Nayuk.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Pa.
Four.
Councillor Payne.
Four.
Councillor Scroggy.
Four.
Councillor Martin Smith.
Four.
Councillor Tom Smith.
Four.
Councillor Hemingway.
Four.
Councillor Tausie Hinton.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's carried.
Thank you very much, Caroline. We're now on item ten, which is the referral from appointments on conditions of service committee pay policy statement twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. It's the report to the Service Management Manager Organisational Development. The recommendation is in the agenda at the front of your pack. So councillor Clark, would you like to move, please?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, formally move it.
Thank you, councillor Payne, would you like to second?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Formally second the recommendation and reserve the right to speak.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this? Councillor Adams, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just welcome the report and I'd like to thank the officers for their in-depth analysis and for the work completed by all councillors in their capacity as members of committees relevant to decision-making and content in this report. As many of us have already had vision of its contents, though, through those committees, I have nothing to add, other than my group will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you, councillor Adams. No? No? Okay, councillor Clark, would you like to close, please?
Just move to the vote, Madam Mayor, thank you.
As the pay policy is already approved and the council is being asked only to authorise its publication, I do not propose to take a vote on this item. If any member is not content with this, would please indicate now, otherwise I will assume that the council is quite happy with the recommendation proposed by councillor Clark. Everyone happy? Yeah, okay. That's it then, thank you, not having a vote. Item eleven is the overview and scrutiny annual report, the report to the Democratic Services Officer. The recommendation is on page eighty-seven. Councillor Clooney, would you like to move, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And if I may, I'd just like to say a few words about the annual report. I think the details speak for themselves on pages eighteen, nine to ninety-two of the pack. But I would like to thank the members of the committee for their enthusiastic engagement throughout the time in scrutiny. And also thanks to members who participated in working groups. But in a massive addition to that, I'd like to thank the officers who support the committee in its work, providing data and attending meetings to present that data and answer questions. Much of the report here refers to pre-pandemic times, it's about nineteen twenty. But I also want to say a massive thank you to the officers who've continued to provide a lot of support during the pandemic time to the scrutiny committee, when they've had a lot of pressures on them in other areas as well. And scrutiny continues to be very healthy at Gedling. In the next report for the following year, we'll talk about the flooding working group, which is going on at the moment, which was born out of the last budget council, members may remember. More recently, we've also started a working group on temporary accommodation for survivors of domestic abuse. Finally, just a quick word to thank Helen Lee from Democratic Services, who provides such a great support to the whole committee. So I recommend to receive the report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Clooney. Councillor Feeny, would you like to second, please?
Yes, I'd second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this? Nobody? So councillor Clooney, would you like to close, please?
Yeah, no further comments.
No further comment. Okay, my darling, thank you, councillor Clooney. I don't propose to take a vote on this item, so if any member's not content with this, would they indicate now? Otherwise, I'll assume the council is quite happy to receive the annual report proposed by councillor Clooney. So nobody, no? Thank you very much. Item twelve is the independent remuneration panel, reports and recommendations for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. That's the report to the Democratic Services Manager. The recommendation is on page ninety-three of the agenda. Councillor Clark, would you like to move, please?
Move the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Payne, would you like to second?
Yes, Madam Mayor, second. And just for the purpose of transparency, to read out the specific wording that the leader and I are moving and seconding. Number one, to thank the independent remuneration panel for its work. Number two, to accept the recommendations in the report of the independent remuneration panel. Number three, consequently, to agree the members' allowances for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two set out in appendix two to the report, noting that they are to be uplifted in line with any staff pay award, should one be agreed. And number four, to authorise the monitoring officer to make appropriate amendments to part six of the constitution to reflect the changes to members' allowances agreed. Reserve the right to speak, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Payne, would anyone like to speak on this? No? So, no, nobody? Councillor Clark likes to close then, please?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Michael's just covered the four items I was going to bring in there. But I will say that this is, and Chris Barnfather's on the meeting as well, we've finally got to a point where there's no big row over this. It's absolutely done by, you know, it is done by a little bit by ourselves, but it's an independent panel that's looking at it and it's a smooth transition to the next year's recommendation. So I'm pleased with that. Finally, we've got some sense, because it used to be all hell at those some meetings because something was being increased or whatever was happening. So we've now got a sensible way forward and I'm happy with that. I hope the rest of the council are, so I recommend you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Clark. Can we now take a vote on this, please, Caroline?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to confirm, councillors, when your name is called, please state whether you are for, against or abstain. And a reminder to take yourself off mute at this time. So councillor Adams.
Four, thank you.
Councillor Peter Barnes.
Four.
Madam Mayor.
Four.
Councillor Barnfather.
Four.
Councillor Bosworth.
Four.
Councillor Boyle.
Four.
Councillor Brooks.
Four.
Councillor Clark.
Four.
Councillor Clooney.
Four.
Councillor Collis.
Four.
Councillor Creamer.
Four.
Councillor Elliott.
Four.
Councillor David Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Roxanne Ellis.
Four.
Councillor Elwood.
Four.
Councillor Feeny.
Four.
Councillor Fox.
Four.
Councillor Gibbons.
Four.
Councillor Greensmith.
Four.
Councillor Gregory.
Four.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
Four.
Councillor Hope.
Four.
Councillor Keneely.
Four.
Councillor Lawrence.
Four.
Councillor Ron McRusden.
Four.
Councillor Viv McRusden.
Four.
Councillor Miller.
Four.
Councillor Murray.
Four.
Councillor Nayuk.
Four.
Councillor Paling.
Four.
Councillor Pa.
Four.
Councillor Payne.
Four.
Councillor Scroggy.
Four.
Councillor Martin Smith.
Four.
Councillor Sam Smith.
Four.
Councillor Hemingway.
Four.
Councillor Tausie Hinton.
Four.
Councillor Truscott.
Four.
Councillor Wheeler.
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's carried.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Right, we're on item thirteen now. This is to receive questions and comments from members concerning any matter dealt with by the executive or by a committee or subcommittee standing order eleven point one. There are thirteen sets of minutes on this agenda, so therefore propose to take them all as one. If any member would like to ask a question or make a comment about any of the minutes, would you please indicate when asked by using the raise button or put in a message on the meeting chat, if you're able to? Please speak up in a few minutes when asked. Can I remind you that you must refer to the page number that you're speaking about? First of all, item thirteen, minutes A to E. Any comments or questions, please? No? Right, items F to I, any questions or comments, please? No? Items J to M, any comments or questions, please?
Councillor Murray.
Councillor Murray.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I have a question, if I may. The item M, item thirteen M.
Page number?
It's page number one hundred and ninety-four, the final page of the bundle.
Right. Okay.
And this is a question in relation to the middle of the page, where we have the description, it's a question to the portfolio holder for growth and regeneration. And it concerns the issue headed Proposed Street Names for the development at land to the west, Mappleby Plains, Mappleby, Nottinghamshire. And the question is this, whether the portfolio holder And the question is this, whether the portfolio holder could provide to us an indication of the basis upon which he considered proposed street names, and whether he would consider the Secretary of State for Cultures. Forgive me, Madam Mayor, do you hear that?
No.
It's page 194.
Page 194. The back page of the bundle, effectively.
Street names?
Street names.
For the development at land to the west, Mappleley Plains.
That's right.
To prove the names to be used.
Jenny. Have you identified the place in the bundle, Madam Mayor?
Sorry?
Have you identified the relevant place in the bundle?
Yes, yeah, we found it.
So my question. My question, if I may, to the portfolio holder of growth regeneration on this delegated decision, was what standards, what measures did he apply to considering what the proposed street names should be and what should be approved? And whether he considered the proposal that was discussed in the media this week and endorsed by the Culture Secretary, that it would be appropriate for street names to be named after local winners of the Victoria Cross and George Cross? Plainly, that would be a relevant consideration. And I would be grateful for an indication as to whether, in future, that approach could be adopted when considering these types of applications.
Well, that's councillor Hollingsworth.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the question. Street names are usually selected using data which shows a particular attachment to an area. So as in Chase Farm, all the street names were named after victims who had died at Gedling Colliery. So there is usually a local attachment when the names are selected. And I did, at one time, have a look at the rather large tome, which officers often use to have a look for local connection. I think the idea of using local Victoria and George Cross awardees is perfectly good. I'm very happy to look at that. I wasn't aware that that had been suggested, but thank you for that suggestion. I will take it forward and discuss it with officers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Murray, are you satisfied with that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question or make a comment on any of these? Please speak now. No, 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 no. Okay. That's it. We're on item 14. Which, do you notice, has been given understanding under 11.3, that's A.
Received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item 15, to consider motions, understanding order 12. Three motions have been received and at the front of your agenda plan. So motion one, the resolution is set out in the agenda. Councillor Rachel Ellis, would you like to propose?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I am seeking to propose the resolution and the motion as printed on the agenda with the following amendment. I understand this may be put on the screen, but I'll read it anyway. So if you have a look at resolution one, ah, here it comes. So delete within the local authority boundaries and substitute, I'll read the whole thing, require all public firework displays on Gedling Borough Council-owned land, and advise and encourage organisers of other public firework displays within Gedling Borough to be advertised in advance of the event, allowing residents to take precautions for their animals and vulnerable people. So, thank you. With that amendment to the printed motion, I am very pleased to move this motion today. I would like to say that this is, above all, a very reasonable motion, which seeks to work with the public to safeguard the welfare of animals, while also seeking the minimum necessary curbs on excessive noise. It is generally in line with the RSPCA campaign. Now, the issue of noise being generated by fireworks is a known matter of concern, not only by myself and councillor Gibbons, but also for other members and constituents, many of whom have been in touch to express their own worries and concerns. Not only do loud fireworks frighten pets, they also frighten livestock, including horses, and they frighten wild animals. The RSPCA reports that a high number of pets are affected by fireworks. The unpredictable, loud, and high-intensity noises that many fireworks make can cause fear. Animals affected not only suffer psychological distress, but can also cause themselves injuries, sometimes very serious ones, as they attempt to run or hide from the noise. Debris produced by fireworks can also present a hazard to animals, such as horses and farm livestock, if they are found on the land. RSPCA research shows that around 62% of dogs show signs of distress during fireworks. This alone means that thousands of animals are affected by unplanned and random fireworks each year. The RSPCA research results also saw that other animals showed distress during fireworks, 54% of cats and 55% of horses. The British Horse Society reports 20 deaths, 10 severe injuries, and 88 mid-to-moderate injuries in horses in firework incidents since 2010. Now, of course, people's behaviour changes, and this is as true for fireworks as it is for anything else. Fireworks are meant to be fun. Most people enjoy a good fireworks display, myself included. No one wants to be accused of being the fun police, but the use of fireworks over time has changed. Living on a hill, we have a particularly good view across Arnold and beyond. While this recent New Year's Eve was certainly unique due to the coronavirus restrictions, I think it's fair to say that the cumulative display of fireworks across Arnold was bigger and louder than that we even saw at the millennium. Pet owners tell me they find their pets frightened from loud fireworks for at least a month around bonfire night. It is also true to say that fireworks have become a regular part of many celebrations and festivities. Now, resolution three of the motion commits the council to lobby the UK government and Gedling Borough's two local members of parliament, and to urge them to introduce legislation to limit the maximum noise level of fireworks to 90 decibels for those sold to the public for private displays. This is in line with the RSPCA campaign on this matter. Did you know that the current allowed level of 120 decibels is equivalent to a jet aircraft taking off? Such a noise level for a firework is unnecessary and unreasonable. Madam Mayor, this is a reasonable, commensurate, and proportionate motion within the powers of the borough. And I urge members to vote in favour. Thank you.
Thank you so much, councillor Ellis. Councillor Gibbons, would you like to second this, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank councillor Ellis for moving this motion. I'd just like to give the council a bit of background to sort of like the passage within parliament and the strength of public opinion around this issue. And in parliament, it was debated on the 2nd of November 2020, around an E petition, which attracted 300,000 people to sign that petition. Over the period of three years, this attracted three-quarters of million of people to petition the government on the same matter. In our same, in Gedling Borough, 657 people actually took part in the petition that I just mentioned. As we are seeking support from the county council, if you magnify this across the boroughs within the county council, it amounts to quite a substantial number of residents that have concerns about fireworks. In a debate in the 2nd of November 2020, Government Minister Paul Scully purged local councils to work together, work together with local governments to improve regulations and standards around fireworks. In 2019, it was estimated that there was 14 million people actually attended organised displays, while 10 million individuals bought fireworks. So there is an appetite around attended organised displays, of which this motion seeks to have some sort of regulation, some sort of guidance around. And with this in mind, Madam Mayor, I second this motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Gibbons. I can see two hands up. Councillor Viv McCrossan, you'd like to speak on this then? Hello, Viv? Councillor McCrossan?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I hope you can hear me, because the sound keeps going in and out. But can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to say, as a very massive dog owner, as you know, I am very much in support of this motion. I've had a huge amount of mail from my constituents in terms of their concerns about fireworks on animals. It's been particularly difficult, I think, this year, COVID year, because I'm aware that more and more local gardens are having fireworks. I particularly noticed it for my own dogs that become very, very distressed, so much so I can't walk out at night with some of my dogs, because they're so scared. I'm hearing in my wall fireworks every other night, in essence, being let off. And I would very much support this. I think it's time we gave animals a voice, and I would like to see a reduction in noise, a reduction in the amount of time being allowed to let fireworks on, and reduction in fear for animals. So I'm massively supportive of this motion, and I really do hope we can make a difference to animals that are terrified. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor McCrossan. Councillor Bonfather, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you councillor Ellis for bringing this motion before us this evening. I have to say, my normal reaction to motions which are provided by other organisations as generic motions, and then effectively touted around this different local authorities at different levels, I'm normally quite resistant to supporting such motions. However, this motion that's before us today, and there's a similar motion before the county council that appeared in December, and has yet to be heard, the motion before the county council has been altered from the general theme of the one that's before us today. And I thank councillor Ellis for the reasonableness of the motion, the measuredness of this motion that's before us today. As has been pointed out by councillor Gibbons, there are millions of people in this country who historically, traditionally, and currently enjoy firework displays. And of course, firework displays are not restricted to the 5th of November and bonfire night. Firework displays now occur on for many other occasions, whether it be Christmas, New Year, birthday celebrations, Chinese New Year, Diwali. They have grown like topsy in terms of the numbers of displays. And whilst the legislation is quite clear as to when fireworks can be legally sold by authorised and regulated dealers, we all know that fireworks are actually let off indiscriminately throughout the year, particularly around the month of November, many, many weeks prior to November the 5th, and for many, many weeks afterwards. And they do cause enormous distress to animals, and of course, by definition, to the owners of animals that have to deal with that distress. So there's a balance here between restricting personal freedoms and actually recognising that the use of fireworks is now disproportionate, and to a large degree flouts the law. Authorised fireworks displays, regulated fireworks displays, I have no problem with. It's the indiscriminate letting off of fireworks in the street at all times of day and night that I do have a problem with. I don't know whether any of the members present have ever been to Valencia in the month of March. They have a festival called Fias. It's a tremendous festival. The only problem is that it's like November the 5th multiplied by three weeks, because it goes on for three weeks. And fireworks in Spain, there's no sight to them. We don't look at things in the sky and go, ooh and ah, and how fantastic that was as a display. It's purely about noise. It's, they're set off in the city centre, they reverberate between the buildings, and it is all about maximising the noise impact. Fortunately, we do not have that in this country. By and large, fireworks are for their art and attractiveness, and that should be encouraged. The, in terms of the noise, I am supportive of the fact that the noise decibel level should indeed be reduced. The fireworks regulations of 2004, whilst they provide the necessary legislation that no person under the age of 18 years should be in possession of such fireworks, they shouldn't set off in the night time between 11pm and 7am, apart from some restrictions around some of those events that I've already alluded to. The fact that the, and I think councillor Gibbons referred to this, is that the current noise level is limited to 120, but 120 decibels, of course, is extremely loud. And the dates are very specific, as I say, about when these can be sold, when they can be bought, and when they can be actually let off. I think that the motion that is before us today is a good balance. It's a good balance between freedom of expression, tradition, events that have traditionally been celebrated, at a noise level which is acceptable, in a manner in which pet owners can try as much as possible to mitigate the impact on their pets. And of course, as I said, the need to protect those pets. So the Conservative group will be supporting the motion as it is before us this evening. There is a question over that 90 decibel limit, and I am aware that there is currently some research going off at central government level as to effectively what might be an appropriate level. The legislation of 2004 said 120. I think we perhaps all realise now that that is too, it's a bar that's set too high. So whether 90 is the appropriate level or not, I don't know. Research will hopefully assist us in that. But I think that the sentiment expressed within the motion is absolutely right, and the Conservative group are happy to support it.
Thank you very much, councillor Bonfather. Councillor Clark, please?
Yes, thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank the two councillors for bringing this to our attention and to the council. It is a continuation of the question earlier, antisocial behaviour, because there is a lot of antisocial behaviour that goes with fireworks, and it is difficult. And it's difficult to try and tread that fine line. But I do think we need to toughen up. We need to toughen up as a council, we need to toughen up as a country. We need the laws in there that can control this, and when it means no, it means no. There is a cost from injuries with fireworks to the NHS, which is quite massive down, you know, people getting serious injuries, not just on that night where they burnt a finger, but some people get arms blown off and damaged and burns and things like that, which are very excessive. The, so I've already said that the strongest legislation needed, but we've somehow got to come to a consensus on it, and I fully support what Chris has been saying there. The, I'm not happy with the 90 decibels, I would have it a lot lower than that. I don't see any reason, because I think it's, I don't know what the law is on motorbikes and exhaust and car exhaust, but I think it's around about 80, which is quite loud. But it disturbs the quality of people's lives, and that's what we're here to defend, not only the animals, but also the effect on people's, you know, people on their own, people have, you know, it's people now who've sat at home for a year, and some very, very lonely people, and you get some idiots throwing these things around. It's very interesting that also the imports, the imports of fireworks from China in particular, and Asia coming through Folkestone Port, there is no control over that. Once it's landed on the deck there, once it's landed and is shipped onto lorries, and we followed this, and particularly when I got a lot of close connections with policing, we followed various vehicles, and then picked them up in the West Midlands, the East Midlands, further north, et cetera, and found that half of the load had been distributed to unsafe places, unsafe places in our borough, in other boroughs, and therefore, you know, it's like putting in a corner shop a bomb. And that's, you know, so there's a whole, it's a whole raft, it's not just about animals. But I do believe that the effect on animals, wild animals, et cetera, is excessive, and we should do something to control that, or try and control it. But for me, I'll fully support the motion. I would like us to look, and it's really a hint to the chief executive that, possibly, I know our officers are doing all sorts of work, but we've got a few minutes, let's have a look at the effect on business, and let's have a look at the effect on property. Let's have a look on the insurance costs when these damn things land there. So, you know, it might be all right, it was a nice bonfire over there, because it's the farmer's feed that's just gone off. You know, they rely, those farmers rely on those types of things, their buildings, and they get damaged by these stray rockets, et cetera. There needs to be a real strong look by government, strong look by council, to bring something that's fair into this country. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Clark. Councillor Paul Feeney, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say, I will support the motion, but I'd like, in addition to the letter to the MPs, then remind them that any company who operates explosives has to put a risk assessment, the method statement into the Health and Safety Executive. They also have to prove where the explosives are going to be stored, and they also have to prove who's trained to use them. If you had that legislative... And they also have to prove who's trained to use them. If you had that legislation passed on to domestic uses, you'd virtually stop used to talk, because very few people have ever been actually trained to use explosives or to use fireworks. And I think it's just using existing legislation to bring it far more under control and supervised by local councils.
Thank you very much councillor Feeny. Councillor Hope, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, can I apologise for not being on video? But I'm having trouble with the feed. And to hear you, I can't also have the picture. I'm not quite sure why. Yeah, I support this largely because it is, as somebody's already said, very fair. It's not aiming at stopping people enjoying fireworks, but what it is doing is trying to mitigate the extremes of damage that fireworks can have on pets, animals, and people who are of a susceptible nature. You know, we forget that. But they are there, and they're mentioned, vulnerable people. And I think it's important. As I say, I support it mainly because it is not taking fireworks away. It is actually trying to control them. And if at some point in the future it's decided that it shouldn't be 90 decibels, it should be 80, then I'm sure that will help. Furthermore, if every council throughout the British Isles actually passed this resolution and sent it forward, it would have an impact, and it would make the government look again at the legislation. And it would perhaps change the law in a direction that makes things better for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Hope. Councillor Hollingsworth, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I welcome this motion to council tonight. Like councillor Gibbons and many of you, I've had endless emails when bonfire night has been around, and the cumulative noise of a number of 120 decibel fireworks going off is tremendous. We've mentioned animals, but of course, vulnerable people are particularly affected by these. And it's only a couple of three years ago that I had residents locally, one in particular whose child was so upset, she had to leave at one o'clock in the morning and go to a relative some distance away. Another one whose child was autistic, was so distressed it took nearly a week to calm the child down. This is clearly not acceptable. Something has to be done. I'm particularly pleased to see number six, that we work with our colleagues at county to actually enforce the existing legislation. And I will obviously be supporting this resolution tonight.
Thank you very much councillor Hollingsworth. Is anyone else wishing to speak on this? No? So can I ask councillor Ellis then, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Not a lot I want to say. I am absolutely delighted to hear the cross-party support this evening. I would like to thank you all very much for that, and also for your contributions to the debate. It's much appreciated. Madam Mayor, I move.
Thank you very much councillor Ellis. Can we now take a vote, please, on this motion? Caroline.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, just a reminder that when your name is called, please state for, against, or abstain for motion one. And just a reminder to take yourselves off mute at that time. Councillor Adams.
For.
Councillor Peter Barnes.
For.
Madam Mayor.
For.
Councillor Barnfather.
For.
Councillor Bosworth.
For.
Councillor Boyle.
For.
Councillor Brooks.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Clooney.
For.
Councillor Collis.
For.
Councillor Creamer.
For.
Councillor Elliott.
For.
Councillor David Ellis.
For.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
For.
Councillor Roxanne Ellis.
For.
Councillor Elwood.
For.
Councillor Feeny.
For.
Councillor Fox.
For.
Councillor Gibbons.
For.
Councillor Queen Smith.
For.
Councillor Gregory.
For.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
For.
Councillor Hope.
For.
Councillor Keneely.
For.
Councillor Lawrence.
For.
Ron McCrossan.
For.
Councillor Viv McCrossan.
That's it.
For.
Councillor Miller.
For.
Councillor Murray.
For.
Councillor Nyork.
For.
Councillor Paling.
For.
Councillor Par.
For.
Councillor Payne.
For.
Councillor Squoggie.
For.
Councillor Martin Smith.
For.
Councillor Simon Smith.
For.
Councillor Hemingway.
For.
Councillor Towsey Hinton.
For.
Councillor Truscott.
For.
Councillor Wheeler.
For.
And councillor Wilkinson.
For.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's carried.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Caroline. Right. We are now on motion two. The word of the motion is set out in the agenda. Councillor Payne, are you there? Would you like to propose? Because all we can see are three lamp chains. No?
I'm here. I'm here, Madam Mayor.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I'm speaking to propose motion, motion two on the agenda this evening, which relates to bees, pollinators, and the tragic use of neonicotinoids, which are proven to kill such species. Madam Mayor, the health of our bees and pollinators is too precious to be bargained with. Bees are responsible for pollinating 70% of the fruits, vegetables, nuts, and seeds that we eat. Without bees, we could wave goodbye to carrots, grapes, lemons, apples, broccoli, Brazil nuts, and onions. And if we start losing these key foods, Madam Mayor, it could have a catastrophic impact on our future food security. The decline of bee species in recent years is an economic and environmental catastrophe. In the UK alone, 13 bee species are extinct. And now one in 10 of Europe's wild bee species are seriously under threat. That is why, Madam Mayor, the decision by the Conservative Government to lift the ban on bee-killing neonicotinoid pesticides is so damaging, and why this motion is before us this evening. There must, Madam Mayor, not be a return to business as usual when we emerge from this awful pandemic. We must ensure that every step we take towards recovery from the virus to secure our economy and rebuild our country is a step towards protecting our environment. We can't, Madam Mayor, allow building back better and a green industrial revolution, words we've become so familiar with, to become simple soundbites. They must represent a renewed drive to tread lighter on our planet, protect vulnerable habitats and species, and recognise that what follows from the virus must be better than what came before. Back in 2018, as referenced in the motion, Madam Mayor, the then Environment Secretary made a solemn promise on the protection of our bees and pollinators. And no amount, I'm afraid to say, Madam Mayor, of excuses or explanations of a specific and limited use of bee-killing neonicotinoids will alter the fact that unfortunately, and tragically, the UK government has now broken that promise to the public. As this evening's motion highlights, in 2018, the then Environment Secretary, Michael Gove, said in a newspaper comment piece titled, 'The evidence points in one direction, we must ban neonicotinoids', his quote said, 'The weight of evidence now shows the risk of neonicotinoids posed to our environment, particularly to the bees and other pollinators, which play such a key part in our £100 billion food industry, is greater than previously understood. We cannot afford', he said, 'to put our pollinator populations at risk.' Michael Gove was right then, Madam Mayor, and his argument remains right today. And let me also be clear, Madam Mayor, the leader referenced earlier the importance of agriculture and farmers to our community locally, and indeed to the country. And as Labour councillors, we back our farmers. There is absolutely no denying, and let me say this upfront, that sugar beet farmers are experiencing a tough time with crop blight. And we know there are sugar beet farmers not too far away from our own borough. But lifting the ban on bee-killing pesticides is absolutely not the answer, Madam Mayor. Better support for the sector itself, accelerating introduction of blight-resistant crops, and allowances for crop loss to be included in next year's sugar contracts are absolutely all required. And it's important that we state that on the record tonight. Madam Mayor, the choice in the vote on tonight's motion is clear. Back the use of bee-killing chemicals, or vote for this motion down before us tonight, put forward by the Labour Group, to uphold the ban and on saving our bees. Our job, Madam Mayor, is to make sure that we protect our environment and our precious planet. And unfortunately and tragically, the decision taken, and I have read in detail the information in relation to the decision taken by the UK government, published on the 8th of January on the government website, this decision is the first major rollback that we've seen since we left the Brexit transition period. But I am afraid, Madam Mayor, that it may not be the last. And that's why, Madam Mayor, we must take a principled stance, and why we must win this argument and advocate for the importance of our bees and our pollinators. Without our bees, our entire ecosystem will fall, Madam Mayor. And if you don't believe me on that, please listen to the outstanding David Attenborough, who has been talking again about this issue in his most recent TV series. That's why, Madam Mayor, bee health and pollinator health is non-negotiable in my eyes in moving this motion tonight. If we permit bans to be lifted, Madam Mayor, when they become inconvenient, we will never truly address the climate crisis, because our resolve will be temporary and tempered. So tonight, Madam Mayor, the Labour Group will be standing up for bees, will be standing up for the environment, and will be standing up for our future. Of course, Madam Mayor, in bringing together the Bee and Pollinator Action Plan that is recommended in the motion tonight, we will consult with residents. Of course, we will speak to residents. I know there are a number of members who have areas with significant open spaces. And I of course know that there is always a balance to be struck between planting of pollinator zones and pollinator corridors set against maintaining what can sometimes be unwieldy vegetation. But I don't think we should be distracted by those issues, because the council's got a proud record of consulting with those people. This motion is about taking a stance and making sure that we uphold that promise that was made by the UK government, the right promise, may I hasten to add, in 2018, and making sure that we protect our bees and our pollinators, and that we do all we can to come up with those alternative methods, Madam Mayor, that must be out there. The last year, Madam Mayor, I'll finish on this point, has shown that science is a wonderful thing. And our scientists have come up with a vaccine in a few short months, which we didn't think was going to happen in relation to this virus. So it can't be beyond the wit of man to find alternatives that aren't systemically damaging and killing bees and pollinators, Madam Mayor. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move the motion. Councillor Fox is going to second the motion tonight, Madam Mayor. Unfortunately, she has had to have some emergency medical treatment this morning. She won't therefore able to be on video, but she is on audio tonight, and tragically won't be able to speak at the length she would have otherwise been able to speak tonight. But she is determined to second this motion, as somebody who's very passionate about this issue. And if she feels up to it at the end of the debate, I'm sure will contribute, but remains as passionate as ever. And I really sincerely hope that this motion can find cross-party support tonight. It's put in a constructive fashion. It's a reasonable motion, to use councillor Rachel Ellis's phrase in the earlier debate. And it's a critical motion, Madam Mayor, for the future of our precious planet. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much for that, councillor Payne. Councillor Fox, understand you're going to second this. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I would like to second this motion this evening before us. There is a reason why David Attenborough and Monty Don are seen as national treasures. They are passionate about the environment that we all share, and they realise how delicate it is. Such a delicate balance. Science backs this up. And we, as community leaders, have a responsibility to respond to these proven facts and to protect our pollinators and biodiversity. Environmental protection is a top priority of our forest people. And they inherit decisions that we make as leaders. As someone that's been involved in wildlife conservation products and the creation of community gardens within our borough, I am happy to second this motion tonight and also support its action plan. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Fox, and hope you feel a lot better soon. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know there's some people wanting to speak. So councillor Rachel Ellis, would you like to speak first, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Briefly, there may be, I think there will be a few of us on this call who were around in 1962. And if you were, you may well remember the publication of a book called Silence Spring by Rachel Carson. And this was an impassioned plea for governments and the chemical industry to control the use of harmful chemicals. And at that time, it was DDT. It saddens me that we seem to be going this way again, to allow the use of neonicotinoids. Having banned it strikes me as a serious and a retrograde step. And I think it should remain exactly where it is banned. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ellis. Councillor Creamer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to go along with everything that's been said so far, we've actually reached a tipping point in many, many ways on the environment. We've lost bee species in this country already. And to actually introduce now neonicotinoids, which have been banned in most countries, I think it's more than a retrograde step. It's a step we can't move back from. Once a bee has become extinct, we can't actually get it back again. So it should, in my opinion anyway, we should actually listen to the experts. We shouldn't be using them at this moment in time. We shouldn't be using any chemicals as a one-way street. And it's a one-way street to extinction, both for us and levels, and certain bees, maybe all the bees. I honestly don't understand why they've done this, but one particular crop. And there's no such thing as temporary lifting the ban. Once the bees are gone, they're not going to temporarily come back. They'll be gone. So yes, I totally support this and everything that's been said so far. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Creamer. Councillor Elwood.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder if it's possible to propose an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, but I'll just ask the other questions. Yes, I understand that. Yeah. Okay.
You have a second there.
Have you got a second there?
Am I allowed to speak to the amendment first? Or I don't know how it works. Yeah.
Well, I'll take the other questions, and I'll come back to you. Okay?
I think.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. If you could allow councillor Elwood to propose his amendment, and then we'll take it from there.
Right, go to them. Yeah. Okay, Andrew. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know whether it's on the screen. I was told that the wordage would appear. But if not, I'll read it out. The amendment is, something's happening. I'll let members have a chance to read it first, perhaps, and then talk to the amendment.
So what's asking now?
Is that okay? Should I continue?
It's ready.
Everybody read it? I'll talk to the amendment then. This amendment is designed to build on the main motion, not to detract from it. We want to ensure that the wishes of residents are taken into account when decisions are made on wild flower planting. when decisions are made on wildflower planting on council-owned land specifically near to their homes. Whilst this is acknowledged that wildflower planting helps with biodiversity and encourages bees and insects, there will be a perception from some residents that uncooked grass associated with wildflower planting can look untidy, particularly at certain times of the year. In some wards, we have a large number of small to medium-sized plots of land that are owned by the council within residential areas. It does not seem unreasonable, therefore, that residents have a say in the visual appearance of land near to where they live. There will undoubtedly be cases where residents will have a preference for the retention of such land as a conventional law. We also ask, as an additional level of reassurance to residents, that where open space is retained as conventional law, that the frequency of grass cutting be retained. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Have you got a second there, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. councillor Tausie Hinton, I would like to second this amendment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hinton. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment, please?
Madam Mayor, can we have the amendment on the screen for longer, please?
I would assume so, yeah.
Thank you.
Can we put it up again?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I could just say, if any councillors with their hands up, you're putting your hands up to indicate that you'd like to speak on the amendment. So just to bear that in mind, because you only get one opportunity to speak on an amendment or the substantive motion, so just bear that in mind when requesting, thank you.
So councillor Parr. councillor Parr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's with regard to.
Amendment.
Sorry?
This is on the amendment?
No, I was just going to come forward and just say, my thoughts and speech will be on the motion.
Right, okay, thank you. So is there anybody wanting to speak on the amendment? Paul Wilkinson, councillor Paul Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not to speak on the amendment as such, but I was just going to request a short adjournment to allow members to discuss this amendment in our groups.
Can we have a second there, please?
Can we have a second there, please?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you very much, councillor Smith, okay. We have a small break, five minutes.
Okay. It's tabled by the Lib Dems this evening and we will be supporting the amendment. We'd just like to point out, Madam Mayor, that councillor Mike Adams did send through an amendment to the substantive motion and we'd like to come on to that next after this debate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much then. Anyone else liking to speak on this amendment? This first amendment, no?
No, take a vote and none.
Right, so don't I ask councillor Elwood to close?
Madam Mayor, if you, councillor Payne may speak as the proposer of the original motion.
All right, okay, councillor Payne then, yeah?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, thanks to Alec, just exercising my right to respond to councillor Elwood's motion. I'd echo councillor Wilkinson's point. Thank you for the spirit in which the amendment's been put, Andrew. I stressed, and let me just stress again on the public record, that any work around the Bee and Pollinator Action Plan, and particularly around pollinator zones that affect particular localities, of course, there will be a degree of consultation. And I don't think that needs to be added into the motion. The end of the motion just suggests a number of elements that might be included in the Bee and Pollinator Action Plan. I think there's scope for lots more to be added in. And what I'd envisage, once we've got an initial draft, is for all members to be given the opportunity to input into that Bee and Pollinator Action Plan. So I don't think we need to put every single dot and comma into the individual motion. There's a central principle at stake here, which is that we have a Bee and Pollinator Action Plan that is there to protect bees and pollinators and guard against the use of neonicotinoids. And obviously disappointed in the government's decision. So I really don't think it's needed in terms of being added to the motion, but just want to absolutely put on the record that clearly we will consult with members and local communities where it's necessary to do so.
Thank you very much, councillor Payne. Can we take then a vote on the amendment by councillor Elwood, please? Caroline?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, when your name is called, please state for or against or abstained. Please take yourselves off mute at this time. And this is a reminder that you are voting on whether to accept the amendment only at this stage. Thank you.
Am I not allowed to come up for the amendment? Am I not allowed to come up for the amendment?
Sorry, councillor Elwood. councillor Payne, as the mover of the original motion, gets to close, so you don't have an additional right to speak at this time.
So we're voting on the amendment?
Madam Mayor, before you take the, take your vote, to do apologise, councillor Brooks is just informing that she's having trouble hearing anything, so she's logging out and then logging back in.
Okay.
So just hold on just briefly to allow her to rejoin the meeting.
Thanks, councillor Wilkinson, yes. Right, shall we take a vote then, Caroline? This is on the amendment by councillor Elwood, everyone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So councillor Adam. councillor Peter Barnes. Madam Mayor. councillor Barnfather. councillor Bosworth. councillor Boyle.
Against.
councillor Brooks.
Against.
councillor Clark. councillor Clooney. councillor Collis. councillor Creamer. councillor Elliott. councillor David Ellis. councillor Rachel Ellis.
Against.
councillor Roxanne Ellis. councillor Elwood. councillor Feeney. councillor Fox. councillor Gibbons. councillor Greensmith. councillor Gregory. councillor Hollingsworth.
Against.
councillor Hope. councillor Keneely. councillor Lawrence. councillor Ron McCrossan. councillor Viv McCrossan. Do we have councillor Miller? You need to do it again.
If it helps, I can see that she said against. I think she's just having trouble with her.
Thank you. councillor Murray. councillor Nayok. councillor Paling. councillor Parr. councillor Payne. councillor Squoggy. councillor Martin Smith. councillor Sam Smith. councillor Hemingway. councillor Tausie Hinton. councillor Truscott. councillor Wheeler. councillor Wilkinson. Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's lost.
It's lost. Thank you very much. We're going back to the original motion. So is there anybody wishing to speak on this now, the original motion?
councillor Adams wants to propose a second amendment.
councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, as Mike rightly said, I would like to propose our amendment, please, which you should have ready to come on screen imminently.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll read it through. Right to the Environment Secretary, it actually features point one and point two of the motion from the Labour Group. Right to the Environment Secretary Anne Gellinborough, as local members of Parliament, seeking urgent reassurances that the UK Government's recent authorisation in England, hello, that's a lovely picture, of the use of the pesticide containing the neonicotinoid thaxome will not extend past the very strictly controlled licence and remain in the general use ban as in the EU. And point two is to call on the UK Government to increase investment into the research into alternative controls to deal with pests and thus mitigate the hazards of glyphosate on human and nature's health.
Wrong.
So just from that, what I think is really important, first of all, is the reason why we've tabled this motion, Madam Mayor. We basically have some concerns over the interpretation from the existing motion that UK farmers, with the help of Brexit, are set to unleash a war against the country's bee population with one of the most toxic and poisonous chemicals imaginable with utter disregard and contempt for our environment, made possible by our leaving these strict rules within the EU. I will come back to all of that, though, as I have concerns over some missing data in the motion. The first thing I want to address is in the preamble to this motion, in paragraph one, it states bees on their own contribute £500 million to our economy. That figure is actually north of £650 million. In paragraph three, I believe it refers to the AIRC, or International Agency for Cancer Research, or WHO, as part of the WHO. It was declared that glyphosate was probably caused cancer in humans. That did happen, it happened in 2015, for the record. But what the preamble does not mention is that in 2016, the WHO and the UN sent out a report saying that, I quote, unlikely to cause cancer through exposure through diet. And it is with great concern to me that this is not quoted. We have a responsibility as a council to give out the most recent advice. This is old advice and we need to be giving the public all the information. Let's follow all the sciences, councillor Payne rightly said. At the time, people said, well, that doesn't make any sense. How can you have two reports pointing in different directions? And the answer was simply, it's unlikely to cause cancer at realistic exposure levels. So interestingly, there have been court cases in America from people who have extended exposure through the handling of the chemicals, as say, farmers, and precautions can be taken to mitigate that. On those terms, banning glyphosate would be like banning trees because sometimes they fall on people. I agree wholeheartedly with what Michael Gove's statement said in 2018. And it's as correct today as it was then, as Michael has also pointed out. But I'll now set the record straight with regards to bees and agriculture. Just about any farmer will tell you that bees are one of the most important animals in the world and a valuable source of income to farming through their pollination. So much so that bees are estimated to be worth, as I stated earlier, north of £650 million to the UK economy and £425 billion to the world economy. Many farmers now have their own bee hives or use local beekeepers to boost pollination on farm, which improves the yields of their crops. Removing or even harming these creatures would have serious, if not catastrophic, effects on farming and our ability to grow crops. So why have the UK Government allowed the use of neonicotinoid chemicals, so-called banned in the EU, if they cause such harm to bees? Well, firstly, these chemicals are still banned for general use here in the UK, that hasn't changed. The only difference is that a licence has been granted. But this isn't just the UK doing this. In Europe, over 61 times in the last two years, the very same thing has happened in countries such as Spain. And in fact, France have just granted its use for up to three years for specific and controlled use of the chemicals under very strict controls for the following year and for sugar crops only. 2020 saw UK sugar yields 25% down due to a virus spreading by aphids. In some farms, this has been as much as 80% due to the seed not being treated by this chemical. When the seed is protected with this treatment, any aphids that feed from it will be controlled and thus preventing the spread of this disease. Sugar crops, I may add, account for just 0.5% of the agricultural land in the UK. And sugar beet makes up around 50% of the UK demand on sugar. So a big player in terms of sugar production for our own use. But how is this going to be safe for bees? Well, neonicotinoids are only allowed to be used as a seed treatment. So applied to the seed prior to planting underground, so not through spraying. So it ensures that it gets properly to the actual root of the issue. It can also only be used on sugar crops, which do not flower, meaning that it should have no negative impact on our bees or pollinators. Any flowering crops cannot be grown on the same field then for 22 months. And oiled seaweed crops, which is a very big favourite of the bee, must not be grown there for 32 months of a sugar beet crop to ensure there is no risk to bees. On top of this, methods are being used to control the flowering weeds as well, to ensure that no flowers are born and that the root of bee harm is also subsequently avoided. The strict control approval for the use of neonicotinoids in this specific way has been deemed safe by science, something, again, like we've mentioned before, that we should be following. And for that reason, for one year only, Madam Mayor, it can be used. With hope that in time, new methods of controlling aphids and virus yellow in sugar beet can be discovered. There's a quote here from Michael Slyes, the chairman of the National Farmers' Union Sugar. And he says, "The emergency use application is specifically for sugar beet growers to use neonicotinoid seed treatments in 2021 in a limited and a controlled way on sugar beet, a non-flowering crop. The application is made under EU legislation and is similar to those granted in other EU countries and is unrelated to Brexit or future UK regulations. The seed treatment would only be used if and when the threat of the virus yellows disease in 2021 is independently judged to meet the scientific threshold for action. Virus yellows disease is having an unprecedented harmful impact on Britain's sugar beet crop this year, with some growers experiencing yield losses of up to 80%. There are currently no other effective protections against this disease and there are serious concerns about the future viability of homegrown sugar as a result." Now, my sources for this information are the AIRC, the WHO, the UN and the NFU, and also UK Gov. I'm happy to provide any links to this information upon request after this meeting. I just want to say, as chemicals go, I would rather we use less of them and one day not use them at all. Working to research into multi-specie crops and multi-breed animal field occupation are yielding positive results in both soil degradation and reduction in crop pests. But developing new farming techniques takes time. As you are governed by the seasons to a degree, is ongoing, continually evolving. That's why in our amendment, I requested more money to go into research for those things and also that we ensure the general use remains.
Are you ready to press finish?
Yeah, one more second, Madam Mayor, thank you. I will look with anticipation at the parks and green spaces into the results of point three and four of the motion. And I would ask that the results of those are logged and fed back into the council. And may I suggest a count is carried out at the start and then at the end with the pollinators, plants and insects, to determine what the success of those parks are. Before and after pics will be good as well. Finally, I just want to say, I do support the bee, our group supports the Bee and Pollinator Action Plan. It fits fantastically well with the work already carried out by Nottinghamshire County Council with their incredible verge rewinding scheme, which is a truly inspiring way to help create a biodiverse environment. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Adams. Can we have a second there for this amendment then, please?
Madam Mayor, I second the amendment.
councillor Murray, thank you very much, councillor Murray. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment?
I reserve the right to speak, obviously, after any other contributions.
Okay, thank you. No one else? Just councillor Murray then? Councillor Murray, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. Madam mayor, this amendment is to correct, as councillor Adams has said, an error in the motion. The error is to be found in, in the resolutions, particularly in resolution one, in the final three lines, where it says, "Pomer, despite an EU-wide ban on its outdoor use two years ago", that is simply not the case. Whilst there was a prohibition on general use, permission remained for licensed use across the European Union. And indeed, it was, licences have been given on 61 occasions, as councillor Adams has mentioned, including in Spain, Denmark, Belgium, and France. This is not an issue to do with Brexit. However much the deputy leader might try and portray it as such, to do so is to play politics with an important issue. This is a matter of reserved EU law, and the government here have granted a licence in accordance with the provisions of reserved EU law for very sound reasons. And as councillor Adams has pointed out, the conditions upon that licence are incredibly strict and very time limited. There can be no more proportionate way of applying these chemicals and preserving and ensuring that our sugar beet farmers do not suffer a catastrophic collapse in the production of sugar beet in the United Kingdom. Though for those reasons, this amendment requires, this amendment must be passed in order to rectify what would otherwise be an egregious error on the face of the resolutions of the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Murray. Would you want to take the vote then? Shall we take the vote or do you want the amendment?
Are there any other comments?
Are there any other comments first? No?
Councillor Payne indicating, madam mayor.
Sorry? Councillor Wilkinson?
Councillor Payne is indicating, madam mayor.
I didn't see it. Sorry, thank you. Councillor Payne?
Yes, thanks, madam mayor. Just exercising my right to, to close on the, on the amendment as the mover of the original motion. You know, look, let's not have a, a political argy-bargy about this, but I, I don't quite know where the comments from councillor Adams came about, scotching a war, somebody suggesting a war on, you know, bees from farmers and all of this sort of stuff and, and getting very over excited about it. That, that certainly wasn't said in any of my speech. In fact, I think I was absolutely crystal clear that Labour councillors backed farmers. And I actually made a number of practical suggestions about things that, that the government could be doing to assist particularly the, the blight that sugar beet farmers are facing in relation to the individual problems that were, were raised. We can dance on the head of a pin, madam mayor, about the individual different items of, of, of research, but it's an inescapable fact that in 2019, a report by the Food and Agriculture Organisation of the United Nations and the WHO said that there was a rapidly growing body of evidence that linked neonicotinoids, and particularly the neonicotinoid referenced in our motion, to the killing of bees. And actually, anybody who goes out and reads the evidence very clearly shows that there are a number of very wide and expansive field studies done in some of the countries that councillor Murray has actually referenced, where these neonicots were used in certain areas and then in separate areas they weren't used. And actually, bees had transferred from certain fields back to nests in other fields and actually spread the, the neonicots into the nests. So I think councillor Hollingsworth, when I was talking to her last week about this, you know, made the point that a, a lot of these things can have a systemic impact on, on the, the biodiversity and on the, the species that exist on our, on our precious planet. Let me also just, just take on the point head-on that councillor Murray makes. You do well, councillor Murray, to just listen a little bit more carefully to what's being said, because I didn't say at all that this was linked to Brexit or as a result of Brexit. I simply said that this was the first lifting of a restriction since leaving the transition period, the Brexit transition period, which is distinctly different from the characterisation that you have offered in your summation speech. And, you know, again, we can argue semantics, councillor Murray, but it's an inescapable fact that there was an EU-wide ban put in place in 2018 by the European Union. And I'm not going to stand here and apologise for those people and those nation-states that have chosen, chosen to flout that ban and introduce emergency uses in the way that our own UK government has. It's a slippery slope, as we've been warned by David Attenborough and the like. And I think on some of these issues, it's important to, to stand on principle. So I'm not here as an apologist for, for Denmark or any of those other states that you've referenced. The principle behind the ban that the EU, the European Union instituted in 2018 was the right one. Michael Gove was, was absolutely right when he said what he said in The Guardian in 2018, and when he gave the view he gave as Environment Secretary. One does have to ask the question about whether George Eustace is taking as keen a interest as, as Michael Gove, and whether he's punching above his weight in the cabinet in the way that Michael Gove was. You wouldn't often hear me saying this as a Labour member, but bring back Michael Gove, you know, if, if, if George Eustace can't stick to the, stick to the promise that was made by the government. So the motion is, is there. I welcome councillor Adams' support for the Bee Pollinator Action Plan. I restate the point that there will clearly be consultation with, with communities and members on the record in response to councillor Elwood and, and the constructive spirit in which he put his amendment. But I'm afraid to say, madam mayor, that this, this amendment to the motion waters down the condemning of the government for allowing the use of, of this deadly neonicotinoid for our bees and, and pollinators. And they can't speak for themselves, madam mayor, but our fate is inextricably linked to their fate, and it's important that we take a stance and that we speak up for them. So my group, madam mayor, will not be supporting this motion tonight. And I would just urge colleagues across the chamber to just think very carefully about the choice that's then on offer with them in terms of the substantive motion. And the choice when we come to the substantive motion will be to vote to protect our bees and pollinators, or to vote in support of allowing the use of a, of a deadly neonicotinoid, that there is a growing body of evidence that suggests damages our, our bees and pollinators. Councillor Fox put it very well. It's future generations that we're fighting for here and the biodiversity of our precious planet. And I think taking a principled stance on these issues matters. So, so our group won't be supporting the, the motion, madam mayor. And I'd encourage people across parties to support the, the substantive motion that's laid before us.
Right. Thank you very much, councillor Payne. Right, councillor Elwood, you've got one hand up, but councillor Payne has stunned up. So now we are going to the vote for the second amendment.
Thank you, madam mayor. And when your name is called, please state for against or against. Please take yourselves off. Just to confirm that you are, you're voting on whether to accept the amendment, councillor Adams' original amendment that he has put forward. So councillor Adams. Councillor?
Against.
Madam mayor?
Against.
Father?
For.
Against. Councillor Boyle?
Against.
Councillor Brooks?
Against.
Councillor Clark?
Against.
Councillor Cluny?
Against.
Councillor Collis?
Against.
Councillor Creamer?
Against.
Councillor Elliott?
For.
Councillor David Ellis?
Against.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
Against.
Councillor Roxanne Ellis?
Against.
Councillor Elwood?
Against.
Councillor Feeney?
Against.
Councillor Fox?
Against.
Councillor Gibbons?
Against.
Councillor Greensmith?
For.
Councillor Gregory?
Against.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Against.
Councillor Hope?
Against.
Councillor Keneely?
Against.
Councillor Lawrence?
Against.
Councillor Ron McCrossan?
Against.
Councillor Viv McCrossan?
Aga- against.
Councillor Miller? Councillor Miller?
Against.
Thank you. Councillor Murray?
For.
Councillor New York?
Against.
Councillor Payling?
Against.
Councillor Parr?
For.
Councillor Payne?
Against.
Councillor Squoggie?
Against.
Councillor Martin Smith?
For.
Councillor Sam Smith?
For.
Councillor Hemingway?
Against.
Councillor Towsey Hinton?
Against.
Councillor Truscott?
Against.
Councillor Wheeler?
Against.
And councillor Wilkinson?
Against.
Thank you, madam mayor. The amendment is lost.
Thank you very much, Caroline. So now we're going back to the original motion. And I think councillor Parr, did you want to say something on the original motion?
I, I did. Thank you, madam mayor. I did at the time, but I, I've since retracted.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Boyle, did you?
Yes, madam mayor, if I may. Thank you very much. I'm, just a brief contribution in total support of protecting our bees. It's very clear from the contributions set across the different parties here, despite some differences with different amendments and so on, that we are all on the same side, because without bees and without pollinators, we don't have a future. And we have to really, really get behind this and do what we can, both locally, as well as put pressure on government and so on, to, to live up to responsibilities for our future. So I'm very much in, in favour of this. On the question of regulating or deregulating and what have you, and the promises that Michael Gove, when he was Environment Secretary, actually made in 2018, and I agree with councillor Payne, he was, he was right then, and the, and the point still, still stands. When we left the transition period of, of, of the, the common, of the common agricultural policy and the, and the market, and, and we took back control, to coin a phrase, this did not mean or entitle us to hijack our future and tone down regulations and lessen protections. And that is just as clear in terms of workers' rights and environmental protections as it is to prevent the use of harmful pesticides. So I think the government should be stronger on these things and, and continue the European Union ban and write that into British law, the British ban, which is, which it has got, and, and keep it and not, and not derogate from, from that and seek other ways in order to help the sugar beet farmers and industry, as we've been saying. So it isn't about where you stood on, on European Union. You could be just in favour of so-called taking back control or not. This is about protecting our environment and protecting our future. And we need to, we need to do that. So I'll be voting in favour of this, this evening.
Thank you very much, councillor Boyle. Well, councillor Payne, he did sum up, so I think we can take the vote now. So Caroline?
I'd like to speak, please, madam mayor.
Councillor Hope.
Councillor Barford?
Thank, thank, thank you, madam mayor. It's, it's extremely unfortunate the way that this, this has developed. Councillor Boyle absolutely hit the nail on the head here, that there is a fact papers difference effectively between what we are saying in relation to the issue that is important here, and that is protection of bees. We're agreed on the bee action plan. The amendment was a perfectly reasonable amendment if the intention of this motion before us today was anything but to attack the government. The reality of it is, if, if the, the story doesn't fit the narrative, if the facts don't fit the narrative, we'll ignore them. So then the motion has been defeated, and I accept that. But it means that the Conservative group will be unable to now support this motion. And yet we support many of the facts within it, but the unnecessary criticism, which is quite clearly now that the sole reason behind this motion of the government, rather than us actually having a unanimous motion we could all sign up to, which was constructive, it's extremely unfortunate, I have to say, deeply disappointing. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Barford. Councillor, would you wish to say something? Councillor?
Sorry, sorry.
Councillor Hope?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I thought you might have missed me, actually. The, the, the negative effects of neonicotinoids is, is legion. We, we've got the evidence. We know the damage that they do. In, in that previous amendment that was lost, I got another piece of data which, which quite amazed me, you know. If a seed is treated with this stuff and goes in the ground, you, you can't use the ground, you know, for, for things that flower for 22 to 33 months. So, so it, it, it isn't quickly inactive. It's there. We have beekeepers in Calverton, and, and I know a, a talk that I attended a couple of years ago, before, obviously, the lockdown, of the allotment association, because I've got an allotment. We, we had a beekeeper there, and, and he'd lost a whole hive. You know, that, that is just one man in, in little tiny Calverton, and, and that must be going on across the country. We, it isn't a case of, you know, attacking the government. It's a case of saying to the government, look, there are standards that we have to maintain, and it's about time, you know, you realise that. And, and you can't just cave in now and again and say, oh, well, you know, it's economically viable and we won't use that land for 33 months. That's ridiculous. You know, we, we have got, you know, we have got to make standard. And, and I fully support this motion. I do hope, because I also supported councillor Elwood's motion, that when, when we come to the bit about, because it is in two parts, there's the, we don't want ne- we don't want, I can't remember what they call, ne- ne- nicotinoids, that's it. There's the second part, which is enhancing the, the, the source for the pollinators. And I ju- I just hope that we still maintain as a borough council the fact that whilst you have wildflower areas, they can be neat and tidy, they can look very nice, and they can enhance. But if, if they're just sown and left, then, then they, they will upset residents because they will look untidy. So, so there needs to be a little bit of care given to the maintenance of them. But, but, you know, the bottom line is, whatever we can do to stop the, you know, the use of neonicotinoids, then we must do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Hope. And conceiving councillor Elwood, I don't wish to ignore you, but you have spoken on this. So what are you wanting to say?
Am I not allowed to speak on the main motion then?
Yeah, of course you want to say.
You want to say something on the main motion?
Yeah.
Madam mayor, can I just interrupt here? So because councillor Elwood moved an amendment, that is his contribution to the main debate, so he doesn't have a further right of reply.
Okay. Right, Andrew.
Councillor Payne for someone.
So councillor Payne, would you like to sum up then?
Yes, madam mayor, but you do have an indication from councillor Gibbons, does Gibbons, who I think he's indicating to speak.
We can't see it.
We haven't got that.
Councillor Gibbon?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just needed to come. I, in a way, I disagree with councillor Barford. I, I don't think, I don't think it is party politic. It's more or, more or less the seriousness of it. And I like councillor Hope. I've been doing a bit of research and I like to quote Professor David Goldsir, who's warned that a single teaspoon of the insecticide is enough to kill more than a billion olivee, olivee and the chemical seed fruit plants into exnectar and pollen, which is then consumed by bees and other wild pollinators. So I think that sort of like hits home the seriousness of this motion, and I will be supporting this motion. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Gibbons. Anyone else?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I think there is a little problem with us seeing the hands. So if anyone does actually have their hand up, could they just take themselves off mute and speak? Just give you the chance now. I think that's all right then, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Payne, would you like to actually close now?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The motion is before us, it's a positive motion, it's a constructive motion. It doesn't use the word attack, as have been characterised by councillor Barnfather. Let me just address the question that councillor Barnfather proposes. He says it's an unnecessary attack and its sole purpose is getting at the government. Not true at all. And I just pose this question back to councillor Barnfather and others. What is unnecessary about speaking truth to power on such crucial issues? If we're not willing to do that as elected councillors, then what's the point in us being here? And I heard councillor Barnfather and a number of members of the opposition say that we agree on protecting bees, except for when we don't agree on protecting bees, as in the example of lifting the restrictions and allowing the neonicotinoids to be used in terms of sugar beet. We agree on protecting bees, except for when it means challenging our own government and our own Environment Secretary, sort of, I think, wanting to have your cake and eating it, Madam Mayor. So the motion's before us, it's a constructive motion. I welcome the suggestions made by councillor Elwood. I welcome the point made by councillor Hope about, actually, you can have your cake and eat it on pollinator corridors and pollinator zones. They can be tidy and beneficial to bees and pollinators. This is about protecting our precious planet, protecting our bees, about saying, actually, we don't want to be using chemicals, as councillor Gibbons has just said, that can destroy whole species and whole colonies with just small amounts of use of these neonicotinoids. And we should take a principled stance on them. And I think, for one, that government ministers are big enough to take this argument on the chin. And it is our job to stand up for our residents. And I've certainly had a lot of correspondence from residents in the community who have seen that this is on the council agenda and want us to stand up for our bees and pollinators. So I'm calling on councillors across the agenda tonight to park your party politics, to park your individual issues about individual pieces of evidence, to look at the motion before you, which is simply asking, Madam Mayor, for us to write to the Environment Secretary and our two members of Parliament, who have a role, to condemn the UK government's lifting of restrictions on the neonicotinoids, to call on the UK government, which councillor Adams broadly supported, to fund proper research into the hazards of glyphosate on human and nature's health. It's also saying to cease the use of neonicotinoids and glyphosate on all public access land that the council itself, Gedling Borough Council, manages in a proactive effort to reverse the destruction of bees and pollinators and protect human health. And also, Madam Mayor, to explore ways in which we can enhance and protect bee and pollinator habitats and encourage environmental growth. And it then sets out that to do that, we will bring forward a bee and pollinator action plan. And the plan could include lots of different things there set out that practically we can do to support our bees and pollinators. So I move the motion, Madam Mayor, and I hope that all councillors tonight will support our bees and pollinators and vote for this motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Payne. So we're now going to take the vote on the original motion. Caroline, I'll leave it to you, okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, when your name is called, please state for, against, or abstain, and please take yourselves off mute at this time. And this is just a reminder that you are voting for the original motion. Councillor Adams.
Abstain.
Councillor Peter Barnes.
For.
Madam Mayor.
For.
Councillor Barnfather.
Abstain.
Councillor Bosworth.
For.
Councillor Boyle.
For.
Councillor Brooks.
For.
Councillor Clark.
For.
Councillor Clooney.
For.
Councillor Collis.
For.
Councillor Creamer.
For.
Councillor Elliott.
Abstain.
Councillor David Ellis.
For.
Councillor Rachel Ellis.
For.
Councillor Roxanne Ellis.
For.
Councillor Elwood.
For.
Councillor Feeney.
For.
Councillor Fox.
For.
Councillor Pippin.
For.
Councillor Dean Smith.
Abstain.
Councillor Gregory.
For.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
For.
Councillor Hope.
For.
Councillor Neely.
For.
Councillor Lawrence.
For.
Councillor McCrossan.
For.
Councillor Viv McCrossan.
For.
Councillor Miller.
For.
Councillor Murray.
Abstain.
Councillor Nyuk.
For.
Councillor Paling.
For.
Councillor Parr.
Abstain.
Councillor Payne.
For.
Councillor Squoggie.
For.
Councillor Martin Smith.
Abstain.
Councillor Sam Smith.
Abstain.
Councillor Hemingway. Do we have councillor Hemingway? Councillor Hemingway? Councillor Towsey Hinton.
For.
Councillor Truscott.
For.
Councillor Wheeler.
For.
Councillor Wilkinson.
For.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's carried.
Thank you very much, Caroline. Now we're on motion three. The wording of the motion is set out in your agenda. Councillor Payne, would you like to propose, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And I think this is going to be a moment of unity for us all on the council. Thanks to the work of a number of people in recent days. If I just start, Madam Mayor, by reflecting back at the start of the meeting and the praises from councillor Parr and from others for the excellent work of Gedling Borough council staff in response to the pandemic. And I think that's absolutely true. And if we just keep that in our minds as we have this debate, I think that just underscores the importance of this motion. If we're to continue, Madam Mayor, as a council, to provide the excellent frontline services and the protection for our vulnerable communities and indeed everybody and our businesses, not only in the face of this pandemic, but to build better after the pandemic, we need the resources to do that. And so tonight's motion, I'm moving an amended motion, which I have the right to do, Madam Mayor, as the proposer. And if democratic services could show the amended motion on the screen, that would be very much appreciated. The amended motion, Madam Mayor, is the result of cross-party discussions, cross-party talks. And I want to put on record my particular thanks to councillor Adams for the several discussions we've had in recent days, to councillor Bosworth, to councillor Elwood, and actually to councillor Hope, who I spoke to as well yesterday evening. The proposed amended motion will be supported cross-party this evening. And I know that the members that I've just referenced will want to speak to why they think this is an important issue in the debate, Madam Mayor. The simple facts, Madam Mayor, which are not contested and are part of the motion tonight, is that the provisional local government finance settlement for the year coming, 2021-22, was published by the Secretary of State on the 17th of December. It contains something called core spending power, Madam Mayor, which is the government's own measure of the resources available to local councils to fund service delivery and to look after our local communities. For the second successive year, and this is not partisan point, it's a matter of fact not contested by government ministers, Gedling Borough Council finds itself in the unenviable position of being the worst affected council in England in terms of the change in core spending power. That is the resources that we've got to do the job that we're asked to do between 2015-16 and 21-22. Just to put that in start terms, that's a 20.2% reduction in core spending power, or about 2.5 million in real cash terms, Madam Mayor. So they're the facts and backdrop. What's tonight's motion about, Madam Mayor? It's a cross-party effort to put the facts before the government, to work with our two members of parliament, both Tom Randall and Mark Spencer, to press the case. I'll say on the record now that myself and the leader of the council had a very constructive meeting alongside the chief executive with one of the junior ministers from the Ministry of Housing and Communities and Local Government, Luke Hall, who was clearly very much across his brief, listened constructively. We put our case and the facts constructively and gave us an undertaking that he would certainly consider and take into consideration the argument that we made before the final settlement was announced. Obviously, he couldn't make any announcements in that meeting because we're in a consultation period. The council has replied to the consultation. And we welcome the meeting with the minister and indeed the attendance of the local Member of Parliament for Gedling constituency in that meeting. Also, put on record the thanks for the support from the Member of Parliament, for the correspondence that myself and the leader of the council have already sent, just reaffirming the discussion that took place in that particular meeting. The prize here, if you like, Madam Mayor, is, and what we're asking for cross-party as councillors, is just to see an increase in our share of the local government finance settlement when it's confirmed. It clearly is not fair, maybe as a constructive way to put it, that we find ourselves in that unenviable position of being at the kind of bottom of the pecking order on the government's own figures. And this wording tonight sets out a constructive way forward. Let me just say on the record, Madam Mayor, that once the motion is passed tonight, which I hope is unanimous, I think is going to be unanimous from the conversations that I've had with councillor Adams, councillor Bosworth and councillor Elwood, there will be a letter sent first thing tomorrow morning. Obviously, time is of the essence. Ministers will be making the decision on the final settlement in coming days. That letter will be seen and signed off by the four group leaders. Councillor John Clark is the leader of the council. Councillor Adams is the leader of the main opposition group. Councillor Bosworth is the leader of the independents. And councillor Elwood is the leader of the Liberal Democrats. I've given an undertaking and I'll state here again that the letter is a factual letter. It's not a partisan letter. It's a restatement of the letter that was sent following the meeting that we had with the minister and that our local Member of Parliament for Gedling constituency was involved in. So in that sense, it should be non-contemptious. And the letter, as you can see here, Madam Mayor, in point two of the motion, will contain every person within this council, every councillor's name and the ward they represent. Clearly, we can't include electronic signatures, that will delay the process. But it will list everybody, and it will list, obviously, the positions that councillor Adams, councillor Bosworth and councillor Elwood and councillor John Clark hold in respective leader of the council, leader of the main opposition group, leader of the independents and leader of the Liberal Democrats. I think that's a really powerful message sent to the government. I think the government are listening, they are in listening mode. The minister said that. I'll praise the minister on the record for having listened to the case that we constructively put across. And I sincerely hope, Madam Mayor, that the outcome of these cross-party efforts is that we can see an uplift and an increase in the share of the local government finance settlement when it is announced in coming days by the government for Gedling Borough. Because what's at stake here is a continuation of the really important work that the council does for all of our wards, for all of our communities, for all voters, whichever party or no party that they voted for. So I'll just close, Madam Mayor, by saying thank you to the Conservative group. Thank you to the independent group. Thank you to the Liberal Democrat group. Thank you to my own group, the Labour group, for highlighting these issues, for pressing these issues. Thank you to the two members of parliament for listening to our case, for having an open door in terms of, you know, pressing our case. Clearly, that is an important element to this. And I hope that this motion can be supported tonight in a cross-party constructive fashion so that we can try and get some additional resource in terms of that share of the local government finance settlement for our local communities, Madam Mayor, and move ourselves up away from that being bottom of the pile in England for the second year running. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. And thank you to council officers, Alison Ball and other colleagues in the Finance Department for the really good work that they've done on our behalf, which I and the leader have had a close eye on in terms of the response to the consultation that we've provided to the government as well. That's all I'll say for now, Madam Mayor, and look forward to hearing the contributions from the floor cross-party.
Thank you very much, councillor Payne. Councillor Clark, would you like to second, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll second that, reserve the right to speak.
Thank you very much, councillor. But would anyone like to speak on this? No.
Can Alec take that down, please?
Alec? Anyone wishing to speak on this? Councillor Paul Wilkinson, please.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. It's not actually to speak on the motion, I just wanted to report to you that following the confusion with councillor Hemingway in the last vote, she did report that she was having microphone problems and recorded her vote in the chat. She was going to log out and come back in. Obviously, we're not sure at this stage whether that has worked. So to be mindful of that when we're taking the vote on, you know, on this particular motion. If she is having problems again, she may need to record her vote in the chat again.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Wilkinson. Anybody wishing to speak then on this motion?
Councillor Hemingway.
Councillor Hemingway.
I confess, I actually just want to test and see if this is working. Okay.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I think councillor Elwood is first and then me, please.
All right, okay. Well, I think councillor Elwood's hand, though.
Madam Mayor, councillor Elwood's hand is raised.
Is it? Okay. Right, councillor Elwood then first.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, happy to support the motion. Gedling, like many district councils in the country, is now much more dependent on local income generation schemes instead of the old revenue support grants. Obviously, due to Covid, our income has greatly reduced, through no fault of our own. It doesn't seem unreasonable that national government should at least step up to the plate and fill that gap, that they can borrow money for revenue purposes which we can't. So it doesn't seem unreasonable that they fill the gap. It sounds like positive discussions have already taken place with the minister. So here's hoping that central government can revisit our core funding percentage increase so at least we get recompense for the loss of our income. And we can go forward in the new financial year with a more positive situation. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Elwood. Councillor Sam Smith, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start this evening by thanking and congratulating all councillors and parties of this council for, quite rightly, removing the politics out of this motion in the interest of working together to deliver for our residents across Gedling Borough. We all agree that Gedling's provisional 2021-22 core spending power is lower than it was in 1516. This is due to a number of factors, some of which are the responsibility of this council, such as new homes delivery and council tax, and others are the responsibility of central government. My Conservative colleagues and I have been working with Gedling Borough's two members of parliament, Tom Randall and Mark Spencer, and officers of this council in attempts to address central government's part. And I am delighted that Tom Randall MP welcomed the government minister of state responsible for local government to a virtual meeting with the leaders of this council last week to discuss this matter before any final decisions are made on Gedling's 2021-22 core spending power. Excluding the new homes bonus, Gedling would receive an increase of 4.3%. However, the 2021-22 provisional figures for Gedling detail a 1.4% rise in cash terms. That's £131,000. Sorry, £131,000 of that 1.4% increase is formed by the new lower tier services grant. Government have introduced this new lower tier services grant as part of council's core spending power, which totals £111 million. Councillor Mike Adams and I have both responded to the funding settlement consultation, as have this council and Tom Randall MP. And in our responses, we have called on this government to increase Gedling's share of the lower tier services grant so that Gedling sees no overall reduction. In addition to our responses to the consultation and the meeting with government ministers, we will be supporting this motion and signing the letter to again lobby the government to increase Gedling's 2021-22 core spending power. In addition to our core spending power, Gedling received over £2 million of Covid-19 funding from government during 2020, of which 1.6 million was on reinvested. It is welcomed news that Gedling will receive a further 0.5 million in Covid-19 on Ring Finks grant this year. It is thanks again to all members for putting aside political point scoring and allowing us all to work together in lobbying the government for an increase in core spending power that could result in more funding for Gedling alongside this additional Covid grant. We hope that the joint letter will be duly noted and considered by government when Gedling's 2021-22 core spending power figures are finalised. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Smith. Councillor Mike Hope please?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I fully support this and I agree that it's good that the whole council is behind it. Because it seems to me we hear a lot about level playing fields. And clearly you're going to have some people who win and some people who lose. But when the difference is as great as we've seen in terms of Gedling, there is a real concern. And to be fair, the only way a council like this can actually serve its community is if it does have the funding. And hopefully the fact that there is no disagreement on this council about the need for some increase will actually impact and will make the government think again in relation to Gedling Borough council. Because without money, we can do nothing. As it stands at the moment, we are at the bottom of the pile and struggling. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Hope. Councillor John Clark, did you want to say anything?
Madam Mayor, you've got councillor Michael Adams, who's indicated before. John obviously gets the right to come in at the end of the debate.
I didn't see Michael Adams up there. Okay, councillor Adams, sorry.
No, no problem at all, thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you councillor Payne. Yes, just to say really, it was, I want to pass on my thanks to the deputy leader of the council, councillor Payne, who took my call last week and showed his willingness to get this over the line. We had a good discussion and negotiation and came to a cross-party conclusion. A lot of work has gone into making this a true show of multi-party, multi-office determination to do something incredibly positive for the people of Gedling. I look forward to reviewing the letter we send to HCLG and working with him on our joint statements. These things are only possible, of course, with the help of our great officer team and I'd like to particularly thank Mike Hill and Alison Ball in this case, and also to my chief whip councillor Sam Smith for his work in collating all the data and his speech just then, and also the deputy leader of our group councillor Murray for his counsel, and of course the wider support of our group in making this a group priority as well. The two MPs, you know, have been a fantastic support also and are working incredibly hard to make this happen. Finally, Madam Mayor, it's nice to see members of this council buying into this motion and we almost managed to keep all the fireworks in motion one. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor Adams. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up on the screen. Councillor, anybody else wanted to say anything?
Councillor Clark.
Councillor John Clark?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor, yeah, no confusion there, I was just writing something down. Yeah, I mean, basically, it's wrong and it's factually wrong. And I'm thankful for Mike and his team and for Sam, you know, coming along with this. I'm also thankful for the MP because I think it's the first deal in we've had with the MP. I'm not saying he's brilliant in our terms, but it was a very good meeting with him. And at some point, we are going to have to lower the political banners and try and get something done and raise this. And I think the minister recognised that. There were three or four, I think, officers who were there who recognised it. And I know Mike Hills knows one of them. And, you know, sort of nodded quite some nodding and approval there. And obviously they can't keep an eye on every single council, but it does bounce back in the face when it's the second year that we've been bottom of that league. So it was a really good meeting and hopefully, I mean, I don't know whether we'll get anything out of it. I've done this before on many areas and it comes back and you get nothing. But eventually that penny does drop, that penny does drop and think, well, we can't do that again. It might not be this year, but it might be the following year, we'll come back. I mean, there are lots of areas, it's difficult on a one-year finance deal, which has continued at the moment and obviously with Covid there and all the concerns about that and how you fund it, how you deal with the health side, how you deal with the human side of it, is probably, you know, leading into the one-year finance deal. Well, that is a problem because it's a problem not only for us to try and balance those accounts, but it's also for government. The new homes bonus, I'm still lost a little bit on that because I think Mike was telling me the chief exec and Alison that I think we gained about £2,000 at the end of it. Because we're not house builders, we're not, you know, but we can't guarantee how many houses are built. But I think they're sort of penalized if you don't get 300 there and that's quite difficult, certainly with the supply chain at the moment for building things there. It's also equals, hopefully some of this will happen. The High Street funding, we've missed out on that. The Let's Get Building Fund, which the Prime Minister was promoting and we were very much, we've always been pro-growth. I think that's quite across the borough. The Prosperity Fund is another interesting one. We've got to get a foothold into the Prosperity Fund because that, if you remember, is where the Prime Minister in the Brexit debate, which is now gone and done with and decisions have been made. But that was the money that was going to come back from Europe, was going to go into a fund and we're all going to bid into it. I'm not quite sure where that's ended up. So we do have to be pretty united because I don't think it will happen. But if Gedling continue on, then Mike, you might be the leader of this, you know, and trying to balance these books. You're not, we're not going to be able to do it if we continue down a road where there's cuts, you know, cuts, cuts, cuts. Or we're not even given a fair shake of what's in there. But it is, I'm thankful for the opposition on our council's support. It's difficult to do that. I know I have opposed many and Chris will remember this in pleasing, where we, when I used to batter away on Hazel Blair's and John Reed's door for more funding and you'd come away with a little bit, but they wouldn't give you a great deal. So I'm a little bit more optimistic this time because it's been, it's laid before the minister, it's laid before those people. And I think it's probably beginning of next week we'll know. But we don't have to give up on it. If we don't get it, we go back again and point this out and try and keep going for those pots of money. Those pots of money are coming up. And recently, I don't think every member knows this, but recently there was a pot of money from the British film industry that came up and to bid into. So we've got a film set up, haven't we? We've got the Bonnington Cinema and the Bonnington Theatre. On pushing on that, the debut pop hall and the team, the finance team here have managed to get 66,695 and their joke bit was a 20p. But those funds are being offered continually and it's not just me keeping an eye out for it, Mike or Alison keeping an eye out for it. Every single council should be looking at that and just put it forward. If you see something, well, let's have a bid because if the government are putting it out there, you've got to get in. They won't come and kiss you on the nose, you've got to actually get in there and make a bid for it. So thanks for your support. Hopefully this will go through, which I think it will do. And thanks for all the work from everybody across, from politicians and from members of our own staff that have brought us together. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor. Michael, would you like to close on this?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll finish where I started by thanking everybody for the contributions in the debate and thank you for the work of all those I've been speaking to in recent days. The reason I've been raising this issue is the finance lead for the council for the last few years is not because this debate is about me, not because it's about the Labour group or the Conservative group or councillor Adams or councillor Smith or Mike, our chief exec, or the members of parliament, or the government. This is about the communities we represent, the residents we represent and the businesses that we represent because it's those that rely on the services that this council delivers. And to coin a phrase, the whole is bigger than the kind of sum of the parts, Madam Mayor. And coming together, hopefully our argument will be listened to by central government. A number of specific points were raised in the debate, Madam Mayor, around new homes bonus. Just for the record, obviously in Gedling, a greater number of band A and band B properties we have in terms of the figures that we've got, meaning that it takes around 300 new homes to be constructed before Gedling is able to pass the 0.4% threshold to qualify for the new homes bonus. And that's obviously a decision by ministers and we did press that case to the minister in the meeting. There clearly are issues in relation to the lower tier services grant. Councillor Smith references the lower tier services grant, that's clearly to be welcomed, the £111 million. We did press to the minister in written correspondence and in the meeting that the government choosing to spend 25 million of that amount on a minimum floor funding has provided some authorities with an unexpected windfall, but it hasn't actually provided Gedling in terms of that element. So we've argued that that 111 million should all have been allocated on a relative needs basis rather than 25 million being used for floor funding. The other things I think that could have been looked at are the issues around the Rural Service Delivery Grant. You know, is there an opportunity to get some money through together in terms of rural, the Rural Services Delivery Grant? There are a number of our colleagues on the meeting tonight who represent rural areas and issues with rural poverty and some of the challenges that come with representing rural areas where you've got sparsity of population etcetera. And unfortunately Gedling hasn't benefited from that as well. It's really great that having pressed this case for a number of years now, that we've got an MP, you know, that's now listening, that's in listening mode, that ministers are in listening mode, that is going to press the case and has listened to the argument that we have been making in the same way that the previous member of parliament did for us. And I think coming together tonight, coming together to press this case to the government, hopefully we will see an uplift. Let me just say, Madam Mayor, that there's a lot at stake here and the ASIC test now is, are we going to see an uplift? Because that's the challenge back now, you know, this can't just be warm words. We now need to see the government act. And the ASIC test here for me is as a result of the representations that will have been made by Gedling Borough councillors cross-party. Is the government minister going to act in the announcement that we're hoping to see in the weeks coming? And I certainly hope that that is the case because that's the test that lies before the government. Just to councillor Adams, to councillor Clark as the leader, to councillor Elwood and to councillor Bosworth, please keep an eye on your emails. The chief exec informs me that a draft of the letter is going to come out, I think, after the meeting tonight. It's critical that we get that approved and sent off tomorrow morning. It's all laid up and ready to go. It's factual, the chief exec's taking a lead role on writing that letter to make sure that it is factual and it presses the case and it follows the tenor of the letter that's already been sent that our member of parliament's had sight of following the meeting that we had with the minister. Obviously references the fact that it's a cross-party effort. And just for the assurance of everybody on the call, all members' names will be listed. For example councillor Chris Barnfather, member for Newstead Abbey Ward, councillor Jennifer Hemingway, councillor for Gedling Ward. So it'll be listed like that rather than people's individual signatures for reasons of time pressure. But thank you to everybody, thank you to our officers. And here's hoping that we see an uplift when the finance settlement is announced because if we do, it'll be a victory for a cross-party effort of councillors on this council and for the communities that we represent. So we'll move to the vote, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Payne. Right, Caroline, can we move to the room then please? Thank you.
Certainly, Madam Mayor, thank you. So councillors, this is just a reminder that you are voting for, against or abstain for the motion number three. And a reminder just to take yourselves off mute at this time, thank you. Councillor Adams?
Four.
Councillor Peter Barnes?
Four.
Madam Mayor? Councillor Barnfather?
Four.
Councillor Bosworth?
Four.
Councillor Boyle?
Four.
Councillor Brooks?
Four.
Councillor Clark?
Four.
Councillor Clooney?
Four.
Councillor Collis?
Four.
Councillor Creamer?
Four.
Councillor Elliott?
Four.
Councillor David Ellis?
Four.
Councillor Rachel Ellis?
Four.
Councillor Roxanne Ellis?
Four.
Councillor Elwood?
Four.
Councillor Feeny?
Four.
Councillor Fox?
Four.
Councillor Gibbons?
Four.
Councillor Greensmith?
Four.
Councillor Gwagw?
Four.
Councillor Hollingsworth?
Four.
Councillor Hope?
Four.
Councillor Keneely?
Four.
Councillor Lawrence?
Four.
Councillor Ron Mcrossan?
Four.
Councillor Viv Mcrossan?
Four.
Councillor Miller? Councillor Miller?
Four.
Councillor Murray?
Four.
Councillor New York?
Four.
Councillor Payling?
Four.
Councillor Parr?
Four, thank you.
Councillor Payne?
Four.
Councillor Squoggy?
Four.
Councillor Martin Smith?
Four.
Councillor Sam Smith?
Four.
Councillor Hemingway?
Four.
Councillor Towsey Hinton?
Four.
Councillor Truscott?
Four.
Councillor Wheeler?
Four.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's carried.
Thank you very much Caroline. Can I just say to everybody, Covid's not over yet by any means, so I hope you all get your vaccinations over time. It's still going to take some time to get back to any normality, so just keep cooking. All of you keep safe and thank you so much, every one of you, for attending tonight. Thank you, good night everyone.
Thank you.